Retire outside the rails. Please take all sidebar conversations out of the council chambers. I note that the hour has come that a quorum of this council is present. I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Iman Azam Akram from the Bay of Lafayette, Myles. He is here today as a guest of council member from the mighty 5th district, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young. I will ask all members and guests to please rise. You can begin, sir. The chair thanks to Iman for the invocation. Council will now be at ease.
Now. Now. Read this. "The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 9, 2025. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass."
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 9, 2025, be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 9, 2025, stand approved. All in favor will indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the Journal is approved.
"The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson."
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Majority Leader. The Chair now recognizes Minority Leader, Councilwoman Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On the behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Minority Leader. The Chair now recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings; amendments to bills on first reading; the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor; amendments to bills recalled from the mayor; resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session; a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar; and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session."
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters that stated by Council Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries.
"The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again."
We have several individuals that members of City Council have here today as guests. I'm going to acknowledge my colleague and comrade in Harrisburg, Senator Art Haywood. Could we give him a round of applause? And we thank you for joining us today. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Katsy Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome some members of my community doing some amazing work to our chambers today. But before I do that, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Angelis Ortiz, Councilmember at large, who served our city for many, many years.
The Chair now...
I'd also like to recognize some of our organizations: Women Against Abuse, Joanna Otero Cruz, Maritza Padua, Katherine Ramirez, Board Member Jamie Colleen Miller, our representatives from Congreso, Kira, Lutheran Settlement House, David Charles, and Love Shouldn't Hurt, Christina Vega. Thank you all for joining us today.
Member Lozada, could you also acknowledge why we are all wearing purple today and the purpose of the purple, please?
We are. Today, I am co-introducing a resolution with Majority Leader Kendra Brooks in recognition of October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And our goal is to ensure that we talk about domestic violence not just during the month of October, but that we normalize it and we connect women with resources that they need in order to remain safe.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes my Majority Leader, Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you so much, Council President. Today, I rise to recognize my Community College of Philadelphia legislator for the day. I did not meet her for the first time today. I had the wonderful opportunity to meet her while she was a student at the Philadelphia High School for Girls in Councilmember Bass's district. Please welcome Janelle Ari King. Janelle, I'd like you to stand. She is studying Communication and Media Studies at CCP. She loves nature and writing. She is already a self-published author as well as an advocate for mental health in African-American youth. Her passion certainly shines through in everything she does, and we know you have a bright future ahead of you, so we welcome you, Janelle. And Council President, while we're here, I wanted to take the opportunity to welcome the Independence Blue Cross family to Philadelphia City Council. We'll hear in a moment a resolution presentation for their president and CEO, Greg E. Devens, but I wanted to take this time to welcome his lovely wife and his children, who are all now Philadelphians, Greg and Taryn, to Philadelphia City Council, as well as the Reverend Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake. I think she's still here with us. Mitch, Steve, and the whole IBX team. Everybody just stand up and wave your hands. Council President, I first met Greg in 2017 at PA Society when he became the Chief Financial Officer for Independence Blue Cross. And since that time, he has been working tirelessly to improve healthcare outcomes for Philadelphians and communities far beyond ever since. And since taking over the helm of Independence Blue Cross in January of 2021 as the first African-American to lead the organization, Greg has served with excellence under the most extraordinary and tumultuous times, particularly for the healthcare industry and for our world. Under his leadership, IBX has made significant progress in addressing longstanding healthcare disparities and expanding access to high-quality, affordable care. Greg's efforts have established him as a respected and influential leader in our city and across the healthcare industry. He is also the immediate past Chair of the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce. We are incredibly proud to call him our fellow Philadelphian along with his family, and we certainly will miss your leadership, Greg, but we wish you and your family all the best in your well-deserved retirement and look forward to continuing to work with you in this next chapter. Thank you, Council President.
The Chair now recognizes Councilman Ru Landau.
Thank you, Council President. I want to recognize two wonderful groups that we have today. One, I'm introducing a resolution, co-introing with Councilmember Katsy Lozada and also with Councilmember Isaiah Thomas. I wanted to recognize the members of La Liga, which is the first Latino basketball league in Philadelphia. It is their 25th anniversary, and I also wanted to just take a second to recognize Ballet X on their 20th anniversary as well.
Just would like to acknowledge that Ballet X hails in the 2nd councilmatic district in this great city of Philadelphia. So, great job and great acknowledgement for Ballet X. The Chair now recognizes my Majority Whip, Councilwoman Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, everybody. Real quick, Council President, I know folks who were in caucus seen a lot of these amazing interns that's here from CCP. I want to say congratulations to all the interns, but also want to say welcome and thank you to our intern president of CCP, Dr. Marshall, for being here. Dr. Marshall, can you stand up? Can we all give Dr. Marshall a round of applause? Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Dr. Marshall.
You're welcome. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I will try not to be long, but today's a special day in Philadelphia City Council. I'm not going to be long. I'm not going to be out of order.
You say nothing?
He looked at me. I want to... Today, we are recognizing Janaye Monford, a longtime City of Philadelphia beacon. Janaye is a proud daughter of Northwest Philadelphia, 19150 Mount Airy. She is a Simons Wildcat. And Janaye began her long and dedicated career to public service during the administration of Mayor John Street, serving as a trusted special assistant to the mayor. In that role, she worked on pivotal initiatives that improved the lives of countless residents and strengthened institutions that make Philadelphia great. Following that time, Janaye continued to work under Council President Darrell Clark. Under her leadership, she started the... Worked, initiated the NPI program, and that continued on to you, Council President Johnson. Now, the NPI program, the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative, is approaching its fifth year and has transformed the lives of thousands of Philadelphians from creating... There you go. There you go. From creating affordable housing for city workers and seniors to alleviating financial burdens for hard-working homeowners through critical repairs, she has literally done amazing work, making... Behind the scenes, making sure residents of the City of Philadelphia have the best driveways, alleyways, streets clean, all that and more. I think the list goes on. But this is a tough day for me because it's hard to find City of Philadelphia workers who are not bureaucrats. And you are a person that is working tirelessly every single day to make sure things get done. I cried when I heard about the news. I'm not going to cry right now, but I want to say thank you, Janaye Monford, for all that you've done for your decades. Not every city employee, worker, all of us don't get this. You are special, and we wish you the greatest success. And this is your last week in City of Philadelphia. God bless you today.
I just want to brief publicly say it's been a pleasure working with Janaye regarding the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative, and most importantly, putting people irregardless of their checkbook or pocketbook or their zip code into high-quality, affordable, and workforce housing. And when our former Council President embarked on the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative, he put Jay in a leadership position of one of his most legacy projects, and that's to address housing inequality here in the City of Philadelphia. We're carrying on that legacy through supporting the current home initiative to make sure that everyone here in the City of Philadelphia has a chance to have a home. And so, Janaye, again, I thank you for being part of Team Johnson from day one, right? Didn't stick me up. I appreciate that, too. Some of y'all catch that later on because she believed in the mission and really wanted to keep this project moving forward. So, I personally just want to say thank you because you really didn't have to. So, thank you very much. Let's give another round of applause. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to first honor and give shout-outs to my shadow person for the day, Ms. Sarah Roberts from CCP. She picked an amazing day to follow us because we had so much going on downstairs on the third floor. So, she's been running since she got her coat off. So, I hope it was an amazing experience for her, and I look forward to what she does next. And I also want to recognize the Philadelphia Sisters and Watch Party, PHL, that are here in the audience today. We'll be honoring them later on, so I won't say much about that because you stand real quick before we move forward. And Ms. Wanda Sykes is also in the audience. She's also part of the Philadelphia Sisters. I didn't want to just rush over and swipe over because everyone's trying to figure out, like, why is she sitting here? So... Let's... You know, the elephant in the room. We're here to honor them today, so I look forward to what's next for women's sports here in Philadelphia. And I was so honored to be able to celebrate them today on the third floor with breakfast. And let's go. Let's show what ladies can do.
I want to also acknowledge that Wanda Sykes was a part of a team that advocated the law to bring a WNBA team to the City of Philadelphia. Thank you for working in partnership with our mayor, Sherrell Parker, to make that a reality. So, I just want to give you a fly-ward and acknowledge you. Council will be at ease as we will ask for members to please come to the front of the podium, as well as all of the interns who are shadowing us today from CCP so we can take a group shot. Is that okay? Council will be at ease.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, who will present a resolution honoring and congratulating Greg E. Devens, President and CEO of Independence Blue Cross for his... Blue Cross for his visionary leadership and commitment to advancing equitable health care. Would Mr. Greg E. Devens and those accompanying him please join the council member at the podium?
Joining majority of Gilmore Richardson at the podium are the following members: Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember O'Neill, Councilmember in majority whip Isaiah Thomas, Councilmember Mike Driscoll, Councilmember and minority leader Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Mark Squiller, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President. Today joined by Greg Devens' family and also the entire Independence Blue Cross family, we are here today to honor, celebrate, and uplift his service. So whereas Greg E. Devens assumed the role of President and Chief Executive Officer of Independence Blue Cross in January of 2021, becoming the first African American to lead the organization in its history, and...
Whereas, under Mr. Devens' leadership, Independence has made equitable, whole-person health a strategic priority, integrating physical and behavioral health, and working to reduce racial and economic health disparities across the region, and...
Whereas, Mr. Devens has championed initiatives that promote access to quality, affordable care for all, and has fostered partnerships aimed at reducing the cost of medications for members and employer customers, and...
Whereas, Mr. Devens has been recognized nationally and locally for his leadership, including being named to Modern Health Care's 100 Most Influential People in Health Care, Savoy Magazine's Most Influential Black Executives in Corporate America, and Philadelphia Magazine's Most Influential People in Philadelphia, and... Whereas, Mr. Devens was awarded an honorary doctorate in human letters from Manor College in 2024, had the privilege of being the honorary Liberty Bell Ringer as part of the 2022 National Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Observance, and received the Excellence in Governance Award for Modern Health Care for his service as Chair of the Board of Directors for Hartford Healthcare from June 2020 to June 2023, and...
Whereas, Mr. Devens is engaged in civic and professional leadership, serving as Chair of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Philadelphia, and numerous boards, including the Blue Cross Blue Shield Association, America's Health Insurance Plans, and the African American Museum in Philadelphia.
Whereas, he's a trustee of the Barnes Foundation, an honorary trustee of the Amistad Center for Culture and Art, and a commissioner for both the Pennsylvania Early Learning Investment Commission and the America 250 PA Commission. Now, therefore be it.
Resolve that the Council of the City of Philadelphia honors and congratulates Greg E. Devens for his outstanding leadership, his commitment to health equity, and his enduring contributions to the well-being of the people of Philadelphia and beyond.
Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Devens evidencing the sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Let's give him a round of applause.
The chair recognizes Mr. Devens for remarks.
Well, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, and distinguished members of City Council, good morning, and thank you for this extraordinary recognition. I'm deeply honored and humbled by this resolution, and I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for her leadership and for introducing it. I also thank each of you for your incredible service to this great city. The work of this council to strengthen communities, expand opportunity, and make Philadelphia a healthier, more equitable place to live aligns with the mission that has guided Independence Blue Cross for more than 85 years. When I became CEO in January of 2021, we were in the depths of a global pandemic, a time of fear, uncertainty, and strain for our families, for our health care system, and for our economy. In that time, we saw the resilience and heart of this city. Philadelphians take care of each other in periods of crisis. We step up for our neighbors. I'm so proud of the work we've done to invest in key drivers of health like education, food security, mental well-being, access to quality care, expanded health screening, efforts to eliminate systemic inequities, and a focus as well on economic mobility. I was also honored, as was noted in the resolution, to serve as Chair of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Philadelphia. And this gave me a view into the untapped potential of our city in terms of job expansion, inclusive economic growth, and overall economic mobility for young people and families across all of our neighborhoods. And I know that there's much more work to be done in this area, and I want to thank the members of council for what you've done and what I know that you will do and continue to do to help create an environment that supports job growth and lasting economic mobility. I'm passionate about these opportunities and the potential for this city and region. And I'm so fortunate to have had this great experience, but I recognize that none of us, none of us gets to positions of leadership alone. So I'm fortunate to stand on the shoulders of so many giants that have come before me. If it weren't for my parents, Carl and Shirley Devens, who expected my brother and I to pursue education and excellence, I would not be here. In addition, I had praying grandparents, which I know many of us know about. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I had a business school dean, a woman by the name of Sybil Mobley, a graduate of the Wharton School, and her faculty at, what I have to say is not the oldest, but the best HBCU in the nation, Florida A&amp;M University. She and the faculty had a vision for their students to become leaders in corporate America. And I worked for some great leaders over the course of my career who gave me opportunities to learn, to grow, and to lead. And of course, I have an incredible wife and family who supported me in everything, everything that I've done. They supported me through a lot of moves. We moved around from a lot of cities across this country and even outside of the country, a lot of long nights at the office, a lot of nights away from the family, traveling, and all of the rest that comes with being a leader. My wife Beverly and I moved here nearly nine years ago, and we have grown to love this city and this region. Our three adult children, Greg, Taryn, who are here with us today, and Danielle, as well as our son-in-law Doug, have since joined us here and become residents of Philadelphia. Yes. And I would tell you that as a family, we all take great pride in seeing people discover this city's rich historical and cultural heritage. We've learned that Philadelphia is a city steeped in the traditions of social justice and community self-determination. Meeting community leaders and advocates who fight every day for their neighbors has been a powerful reminder that real change begins with relationships. Each of the relationships that I've been able to cultivate over the years here is really extremely important to me. And finally, I would have to say it has been an incredible privilege to work with City Council and two mayors during my tenure as CEO. The collaboration between our elected leaders, our community leaders, and the city's health care leaders during the pandemic and after the pandemic was and is an inspiring example of putting people first. It saved lives, and for that, I thank all of you. My time leading Independence has also produced some indelible memories. First, I had a chance to ring the Liberty Bell, an incredible honor. I've worked with committed leaders and associates across our company who love this city and love this region, some of whom are represented here with me today. We've helped to sustain St. Christopher's Hospital for Children. We've led on supplier diversity and health equity, and we've seen Philadelphia teams make it to the Super Bowl and to the World Series. I've also had the good fortune to watch 40,000 runners cross the starting line, including my youngest daughter Danielle, who's not here, at the Independence Blue Cross Broad Street Run, a source of great pride for our organization. I've celebrated milestone anniversaries for our sponsorship of the Indigo Bike Share Program and the Independence Blue Cross River Rink. Yes, thank you. And it's also a source of great pride to me that we've seen our company logo added to the uniforms of the Phillies, the Flyers, and the Philadelphia Union. We've expanded access to behavioral health providers in this region by almost 50% in the last couple of years. And because of the work that Independence has led with the region's health systems to stop using racial adjustments in clinical decision-making, we've seen hundreds of people receive life-saving kidney transplants. And then, in my time here, I've seen this city elect a black woman as the 100th mayor of Philadelphia. So let me close by saying all of these great experiences have made my work and personal life here richer. And also, I'm incredibly grateful for all of them and for all of you. Thank you again for this recognition. May God continue to bless the City Council and the great city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Council will be at ease. Members, please take your seats. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks, who will present a resolution celebrating the work of Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters in building an inclusive and inspiring community-centered hub for women's professional sports in Philadelphia. Would Jen Leary and those accompanying her please join the council member at the podium?
Joining Member Brooks is Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Young, Councilman Phillips, and Councilman Jamie Gartier. I want to also take a matter of personal privilege and knowledge, Jen Leary, for founding the Red Paw Emergency Relief Shelter for animals, Housing Point Breeze. Give a round of applause for that. One of my early partners when I got in City Council, making sure we rescue dogs.
All right, we're all here. No, we're not.
One second. One second, Member Brooks.
Good morning, everyone. I'm so proud to be recognizing Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters today in council. I've been fortunate to partner with both organizations over the last couple of years. I've seen firsthand how important it is for women to enjoy their fandom in exclusive spaces, many of which are Black and queer-led. Last year, the Arts and Culture Team at Work and Families Organization partnered with Watch Party PHL, and I remember the feeling and the energy as I walked into the space. It was sisterhood. It was excitement. It was the electric energy of women on the verge of something big. Women have always been athletes, but throughout history, our athleticism has been cast in the shadows of men's sports. Not anymore. Today, we are honoring and celebrating the women who came together to bring excitement and energy of women's sports into the spotlight. They have organized to unite diverse groups of stakeholders behind common goal of advancing sports equity and expanding the reach of women's sports in Philadelphia. Their work is opening up untapped opportunities for mentorship, tourism, entrepreneurship, and empowerment right here in Philadelphia. Philadelphia Sisters and Watch Party PHL have both played an important role in making Philadelphia a global sports destination for 2026. And I cannot wait to celebrate with all of their incredible community members during next year's events.
Celebrating the work of Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters in building an exclusive and inspiring community-centered hub for women's professional sports in Philadelphia. Whereas, Watch Party PHL was founded in 2024 to bring together women's sports fans across Philadelphia through monthly watch parties, creating a safe, inclusive community that celebrates women's basketball, soccer, tennis, and more, with a sound on and a spirit of connection and belonging, and...
Whereas, founded in 2019, the Philadelphia Sisters have been at the forefront of efforts to bring professional women's sports to the city, partnering with the 76ers, Comcast, and community leaders to secure Philadelphia's long-awaited WNBA franchise, and...
In close to two years, Watch Party FHL has grown into a vibrant movement, drawing hundreds of supporters to events, launching a podcast that highlights women-owned, Black-owned, LGBTQ-owned businesses and sports advocates in Philadelphia, and amplifies community leaders and athletes in Philadelphia, and...
Whereas, advocating for Philadelphia's women's sports equity across the world, the Philadelphia Sisters have led the charge, bringing communities together with key stakeholders and investors. They've engaged with the WNBA repeatedly, overcome... They've engaged with the WNBA repeatedly, overcome multiple setbacks, worked through delays as WNBA teams were awarded to other cities, and remained hyper-focused on leveling the playing field for sports equity in Philadelphia. And...
Whereas, Watch Party PHL is now channeling this energy into plans for a premier women's sports hub, planned to open by spring of 2026, envisioned as a coworking cafe by day, restaurant, and watch bar by night, and special event space. It will set up a new standard for fandom everywhere, providing a place where the community can gather and to celebrate women's sports of the present and honor local heroes of the past. And I'll add, watch Unrivaled. And...
As someone who was a manager of women's basketball at Temple, I know firsthand how hard these athletes work. So, you know, whereas the WNBA represents just the beginning, as the Philadelphia Sisters are establishing a model to demonstrate how women's professional sports can not only take root but truly thrive in Philadelphia. And...
Whereas, the launch of a new venture will coincide with Philadelphia's growing profile as a global sports destination, including the incoming MLB All-Star Game, FIFA Philadelphia Cup 2026, and PGA Championship, and with the long-awaited selection of Philadelphia as home as a new WNBA franchise in 2030. With further, with further affirm that Philadelphia is a women's sports town and lay the foundation to welcome additional women's professional leagues such as the NWSL, PWHL, and more. And...
Philadelphia is among a growing number of cities embracing the trend of women's sports bars as cultural anchors and spaces for everyone, places that glint of eyes, community uplift women-led and community-focused entrepreneurship, and expand the social and economic footprint of women's sports. And...
Whereas, the Committee on the Creative Economy recognizes that the most creative and equitable civic interventions begin at the grassroots level with community-driven efforts that reflect and elevate neighborhood identities, engage in democratic decision-making, and continually reinvest in the communities that support them. And...
Whereas, the work of Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters exemplifies this approach by enriching Philadelphia's creative economy, strengthening community bonds, and enhancing the city's global reputation as a place where inclusive ideas thrive. And...
Whereas, this milestone marks just the beginning of a broader movement because Philadelphia deserves and is hungry for more. With the WNBA franchise as a starting point, and Philadelphia Sisters and their partners are committed to bringing additional women's professional sports to the city, ensuring that Philadelphia becomes not only a leader but a model for equity in sports nationwide. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby celebrates the work of Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters in building an inclusive and inspiring community-centered hub for women's professional sports in Philadelphia. Thank you all so much for joining us, and I'm so honored and privileged to introduce our speakers Jen Leary and Ashley Lukemeyer as the founders and key leaders of Watch Party PHL. And the Philadelphia Sisters Jen and Ashley have been at the center of the charge to bring women professional sports and WNBA team to Philadelphia. True trailblazers, Jen and Ashley's visionary work on sports equity is changing the landstate of Philadelphia athletes forever.
The Chair recognizes Jen and Ashley for remarks.
Thank you. This resolution is an honor and a recognition of a community and a movement whose time has come in Philly. I want to start by thanking Council President Kenyana Johnson, my councilperson. And I want to extend appreciation to Councilpersons Brooks and Councilmembers O'Rourke, Thomas, and Gilmore Richardson for this honor and for their continued support of this movement. When I kicked off Watch Party in March 2024, the goal was twofold. It was to bring a community of women's sports fans in Philadelphia together by providing a space that was committed to showing the games with the sound on. Secondly, it was to show the WNBA, the NWSL, and anyone who would listen that Philly is a women's sports town. As a lifelong Philadelphia sports fan who bleeds green, it was important for me to also build the kind of women's sports fandom here in Philadelphia that we are known for. And I think that's happening. And while Watch Party's efforts may be the most visible, we are by no means the originators or the only ones. I learned quickly when I started Watch Party that there were so many other folks working behind the scenes to bring professional women's sports to Philadelphia. We share this honor with everyone who has laid the groundwork before us, many of whom are in this room with me today, and we would not be here without. And most of them are behind me. Last February, I went to a sports fandom organizing conference in Miami and got to experience the incredible atmosphere of Unrivaled. It was there I decided Philly needed a women's sports bar. That night, I got home from Unrivaled, and I randomly DM'd Alex Sykes in the middle of the night and said I was thinking about opening what was then Philly's first women's sports bar. And I asked her for her thoughts. She graciously responded almost immediately with her phone number and "let's talk." Eight months later, look at us now. For over six years, the Philadelphia Sisters have worked tirelessly, without public fanfare or recognition, to secure professional women's sports teams for this city. Their commitment has been unwavering. Their efforts have fundamentally changed the sports landscape of this city forever. WNBA 2030, here we come. Watch Party PHL is honored to share this resolution with them. Finally, I would just like to take this opportunity to acknowledge my team. Most of them are behind me as well. First, my partners in the hub, Megan Datola and Fawn McGee, and my partner in life and in the hub, Lori Albright, all of whom, no matter the crazy thing that pops into my head in the middle of the night, like turning the watch parties into a brick-and-mortar location or DMing Alex Sykes, are always there to ride with me. And then, of course, my Watch Party and Hub teams, quite simply, these people standing up here are the best of the best in the game, full stop. Any successful executive will attest that long-term success requires you to surround yourself with people who are smarter than you, who know things you don't know, and offer different perspectives. Every day, I am energized and in awe of this team and their dedication and talent. Together, we are truly changing the way people engage with and experience women's sports here in Philly. And this spring, we will be opening Philly's premier women's sports hub, and it will not be just a bar, it will be a landmark for Philadelphia sports. And it won't have happened by chance. It will be because of this team, this community, and this movement. Go Birds!
I just want to know, President Johnson, if I do the magic "and," will Wanda Sykes come up here and speak? Good morning, I'm Ashley Lunkenheimer, and I am so proud to be part of the Philadelphia Sisters. Alex Sykes, who was just mentioned, who does DM a lot in the middle of the night, so it's part of her energy that we love. Wanda Sykes, and my wife, Starla Crandall, we have been working for a very long time to do this. Like Jen said, we are so honored to be here. I can't believe we're standing in City Council celebrating women's sports the way we are because it's not just an abstract concept anymore, it's for real. So, thank you, Council President Johnson. And also, along with Councilpersons Brooks, O'Rourke, Thomas, and Gilmore Richardson, and we can't leave you out, and Landau, and all the other distinguished council people, not only for this recognition but for the work you do every day to help make Philly the place that we all are proud to call home. I was born down the street here in Jefferson Hospital, long before Title IX was a thing and women had more opportunities, but there were women's basketball players in Philadelphia I could look up to. When Dawn Staley showed up home from college at AAU local tournaments in Philadelphia, it was like the sun shone in, and we knew, right? We knew what she was going to be in Philly. It wasn't just her, I went to Kathy Rush summer camps, I played with Dr. J's daughter in high school, because Philly has always, we weren't very good. And he came to games, he was a loyal father, you know, girl dad, right? And he would come to games and you'd be thinking, "Oh, my gosh, what did he see?" Anyway, but Philly has actually always been a women's sports town. We just forgot, I guess, for a while, and we needed this leadership group, this Philly City Council, the Philly Watch Party PHL, the Philly Sisters. We needed all of us, all of you, to help make us remember who we really are, which is not just a men's sports town but also a women's sports town. So in 2019, the Philly Sisters started working. I want to go long, but I won't, but everything, good thing happens at a bar over drinks, right? The idea came to us that we needed to bring women's basketball first because we are also a basketball town, and that's our passion. And then we connected with the indomitable, then-councilperson Parker, and the incomparable Keasha Tyson, if you don't know her, she's the best, to bring professional women's sports back to Philly. Why? Because every one of us has our sports story. And all of us know that youth sports have the power to shape not only athletes but the entire essence of our community. When a young person, especially a young girl, picks up a basketball, the lesson she learns echoes far beyond the court, building leaders, scholars, and citizens of this community. But inspiration doesn't happen in a vacuum, as they say. It grows when our young people can see women playing professionally, right here in their own community, with the same visibility, respect, and excitement as men's professional teams. When girls see women competing at the highest level, they see what's possible for themselves, they see pathways, not barriers. That's why all of your support for girls' youth programs and for bringing women's professional basketball and other sports to our city, we're not going to stop there, mean so much. You are not just supporting our incredible North Philly star, Kalia Copper, and the Delco Kid, Natasha Cloud, and I think we have another person, Lady Harrison. We have a mother and we have a coach here that is indomitable as well, so we are so lucky to have them here with us today. But we're also building confidence, opportunity, and equality for our girls and our boys. You are showing our kids, boys and girls alike, that the saying is true, greatness wears many jerseys. Thank you all for believing in our youth, in our girls, and the power of sports to unite and uplift our community. And we are far from done. We are not at the finish line because the Sisters, Watch Party PHL, City Council, you're with us, right? No matter what. We are just getting started. Go Sisters, go women, go Birds! And...
The Chair recognizes Wanda Sykes.
Thank you, Council President Johnson, and thank you to all the other council members. I just got to say, it's nice to see government at work. It really is. This is beautiful. Thank you, and for, to be recognized like this, it is huge, like Ashley was saying, especially for women and women's sports. But, you know, this is a sports town. Philly is a sports town, a women's sports town also. So we're, it's so exciting that, you know, we have Unrivaled coming in in January, and then, you know, 2030, like the WNBA. So, I'm not a, you know, natural-born Philadelphian, but I really adopted this city. You can just, you know, feel the, just the strength and the fight and the love. You know, Philly is, you know, one Philly, one love. And, you know, some of my, some of my best friends are from Philadelphia. And I will say, they got your back. I mean, I'm learning how to fight, but early I wasn't a good fighter, and so they've docked people out for me, but that's just who Philly is. That's good friendship, right? Ride or die. And so, and that's how I feel about Philadelphia. I, you know, I'm here, I got your back, I love y'all. Thank you, let's go.
Counsel will be at ease.
Counsel will be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gardier, who will present a resolution recognizing Steven Scooter Fulton Jr.'s outstanding achievements and contributions to the boxing community and his unwavering dedication to the city of Philadelphia. Would Mr. Fulton Jr. and those accompanying him please join the council member at the podium? Joining Member Gardier are the following council members. Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Squillor, Councilmember Brooks, and Councilmember Thomas.
Member Gardier, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. As we can see from the events of this morning, Philly is the sports capital of America. And it's not just the Eagles or our future WNBA team. Steven "Cool Boy" Steph Fulton is an important part of our tradition of athletic excellence. Cool Boy Steph is already a multiple times world champion in boxing with a 23 to 1 record. But he has that Philadelphia spirit in him and he is hungry for more. He's getting ready to fight for the junior lightweight division world championship later this year. Cool Boy Steph's boxing career is an inspiration to young people across Philly, proof that if they work hard, they too can become a world champion multiple times. Even as he soars to the highest level of boxing, Cool Boy Steph is always looking out for his neighbors. His food, turkey, coat, and scooter giveaways are always hits. And I am particularly impressed that he's partnering with financial institutions to rebuild playgrounds and help Philadelphians achieve the dream of homeownership. But I know that nothing is more important to Cool Boy Steph than his family. By all accounts, he is a great father and a family man through and through. Cool Boy Steph, thank you for modeling excellence at home, in the community, and in the boxing ring. We're all rooting for you to bring another world championship home, right? And we will now read the resolution.
Cool Boy Steph. Whereas Stephen, Steven Fulton Jr. is a professional American boxer named Steph "Cool Boy" Fulton, who has held world championships in two different weight classes. He was born on July 17, 1994 in North Philadelphia, raised by a single mother, surrounded by street violence, and lost childhood friends. He was inspired to take a different route in life. Fulton Jr. has made an impact on the boxing community, paving the way for future generations and shining a spotlight on the city of Philadelphia. Fulton Jr. is known for his aggressive fighting style and is considered one of the best young fighters in boxing, having a record of 23 wins and one loss. And?
Whereas Fulton Jr. has received numerous awards and recognition throughout his life for his role in the boxing community and his contributions to the city of Philadelphia. He has held the World Boxing Council WBC Featherweight Title since February 2025 and the Unified World Boxing Organization, WBO, and WBC Super Bantamweight Titles from 2021 to 2023. Some of his recent fights include wins over boxers such as Brandon Figueroa and Danny Roman. Fulton Jr. was recognized on May 7, 2025 with the honorary sheriff badge, symbolizing recognition and respect to individuals who have made significant contributions to the community. From Philadelphia Sheriff Rochelle Bilal and?
Whereas Fulton Jr. has made numerous contributions to the city of Philadelphia, creating access to resource for people who may not have otherwise. He held an annual food drive with the Morris Twin Foundation around the city of Philadelphia and an annual coat drive where he gave away over 300 coats to various schools in Philadelphia. He held an annual turkey drive with Little People Village and a yearly Christmas closing drive for the Search Recovery Center in West Philadelphia. He has donated scooters to young people in need and made various monetary donations to charities, showcasing his commitment to uplifting underserved communities and?
Whereas in 2025 City of Philadelphia Juneteenth Parade, Fulton Jr. was the grand marshal Fulton, grand marshal Fulton Jr. has continuously given back to the city of Philadelphia, where he calls home. Recently, he has partnered with Little People's Village and Annapolis Realty LLC in introducing a program with the Citadel Credit Union to assist first time home buyers and?
Whereas Fulton Jr. will be moving up in weight division to fight for another world title in the junior lightweight division later this year. If he wins this fight, he will be five, he will be five times three division world champion and will be considered for the First Ballot Hall of Famers, which will put him in the record books for boxing and?
Whereas Fulton Jr. will be moved, whereas Fulton Jr. is an excellent man who, representing Philadelphia, has made history in the sport of boxing and inspired thousands of people. He exemplifies the true meaning of compassion, kindness, and generosity through giving back to his community and now, therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, hereby recognize Steven Scooter Fulton Jr.'s outstanding achievements and contributions to the boxing community and has an unwavering dedication to the city of Philadelphia. Please welcome Cool Boy Steph to the podium.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Fulton for remarks.
How y'all doing today? Thanks for having me. Everyone here on my behalf has witnessed the restless nights, dedication, and determination to be where I am today, to receive a great award, not from boxing, but the city of Philadelphia, my city, the city that I love and step into that ring each and every day to represent the communities I give back to, to be helpful and see a change in a positive way. I am proud to be recognized as a recipient of a citation given from the City Council of Philadelphia. I always knew as a kid I would be someone great in the sport. As a kid, I didn't realize my potential that I would be become as a leader today. I would love to extend a hand in any way to help, in any way I could be helpful to improve our city. I'm here, I am here for you, so let's make a change together. Thank you for, thank you all for coming and thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I also would like to thank? Gardier. Councilwoman Gardier, Louis Eliopoulos, Hamza Mohammed, my father behind me. More importantly, these two behind me right here, my father and him, because without them, they, I wouldn't have been here today, you know? This is my first trainer ever and he introduced me to the game. And my father is the one who, my father was away from my life from the first years of my, first years of my life. So when he came on, he made a change in my life. So I'd like to recognize him as well because I am a junior.
I'm going to keep it brief. Permitting me to say, all praise due to Almighty Creator for every endowment He has granted, but I'm being obligated to do so. Secondly, I'd like to thank everybody that was responsible for bringing my son here today, commemorating him, congratulating him, and uplifting him. And lastly, I'd like to say to my son that I love you, I appreciate you, I'm proud of you, and keep on doing it.
Counsel will be at ease. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant at Arms deliver the message from the mayor to the chief clerk. The chief clerk will read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to council the recommendation of the city plan and commission on the following bill, Bill Number 25072145 days. There are no more communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal.
The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to just say something for 30 seconds prior to my introductions of bills. Today, we have Senator R. Haywood who is here today. He is a leading champion for International Dignity Month, which is being recognized in October 2025, celebrating Philadelphia's commitment to upholding the worth and humanity of every resident in the city of Philadelphia. The cause of dignity has been championed by Senator R. Haywood, whose leadership has inspired a growing movement that affirms every person, regardless of race, ethnicity, faith, or identity, possesses inherent God-given worth and value. So as the birthplace of American democracy and a city of brotherly love, Philadelphia has long stood as a beacon of human rights and a shared responsibility. Dignity is not only a value, but a shared responsibility. And I want to thank Senator R. Haywood for coming today to make sure all of Philadelphia knows how important it is to be respected, heard, and valued. Thank you, Senator R. Haywood. You'll be hearing from him momentarily. Council President, in addition to the resolution I'm introducing today for Senator R. Haywood, we have one, one nonprivileged resolution on your behalf and another nonprivileged, two, two, two privileged resolutions and one nonprivileged resolution for today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Anthony Phillips. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolutions, please?
A nonprivileged resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal year 2026 pursuant to Bill Number 170206.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 2025 as International Dignity Month and celebrating Philadelphia's commitment to upholding the worth and humanity of every resident.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Janaye Monford for nearly 20 years of dedicated, innovative, and transformative service to the city of Philadelphia and City Council.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. I'm going to be a brief counselor at ease. I didn't have a chance to acknowledge the professor from Community College Class of Criminal Justice. She has students here focusing on race and justice, but also a good friend, Malika Rockman. Could you and your students please stand? I just want to acknowledge you for your hard work and the dedication. I think members today is young people and sports day here in City Council. And so it's truly empowering to see our young people who will be leading on the future of our city. The Chair now recognizes my majority, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore-Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer one bill on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Philadelphia to construct, own, and maintain right-of-way encroachments in various parts of the city under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier.
Thank you, Council President. No introductions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes majority whip Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today, I offer two resolutions and one bill.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter to prohibit third-party restaurant reservation services from arranging unauthorized restaurant reservations with food service establishment and to provide for definitions, prohibited acts, penalties, and enforcement, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee of the Whole to hold hearings to discuss the current state of Philadelphia school facilities, how the school district evaluates those facilities, and what educational facilities needs are for the school district today and in the future.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings to investigate the rising cost of energy bills, what is driving those increases, and what the city can and can't do to address what, why our energy bills are so high.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
I'm sorry, Council President. I just want to acknowledge that Councilmember Mike Driscoll is co-introducing one of the resolutions with me around energy. I forgot to say that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer two privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A nonprivileged resolution renaming the 1300 block of North 52nd Street as Dr. Demone B. Jones Way in recognition of Dr. Demone B. Jones Senior for his exceptional service to the West Philadelphia community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar for? It's a nonprivileged, right? Yeah. This resolution will be placed on, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, for consideration at the next session of council. Yeah, I was, I was, you're throwing me off. Yeah. This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at the next session of council, nonprivileged resolution.
I'm sorry. I misheard.
It's cool. We good. We good.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Matchroom Boxing and Empire Fighting Chance Boxing for their impactful partnership that expands boxing opportunities in Philadelphia and worldwide.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, everyone. One second to introduce my CCP student, William Ortiz, who is here with us today. Super happy to get to know him. I have four privileged resolutions, the first of which with the clerk, La Liga del Barrio, is co-introduced by Councilmembers Ketsi Lozada and Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the 25th anniversary of La Liga del Barrio and recognizing its ongoing commitment to provide opportunities for Latino youth in Philadelphia by providing a positive outlet for educational, athletic, and personal development.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating young involved Philadelphia on the occasion of its 25th anniversary for their commitment to increasing civic engagement, empowering adults fostering leadership development, and connecting young professionals with leadership and volunteer opportunities.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Ballet X on the occasion of its 20th anniversary for its outstanding contributions to contemporary ballet and the cultural life of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lozada.
Good morning, Council President. Today I offer one privileged resolution that I'm co-introducing with Minority Leader Kendra Brooks.
Counsel will be at ease. I have one more for Councilmember Rulandau.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Technology and Information Services to hold hearings exploring the context of data center development and operations in the Philadelphia region, the demand for technology infrastructure to support increased use of digital services, and the impacts of its development on Philadelphia communities.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. This morning I am co-introducing a privileged resolution with Minority Leader Kendra Brooks.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have one bill co-sponsored by Members Brooke O'Rourke and Landau, and three privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Section 19-1606 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Penalties and Interest for Late Payment by exempting certain residential customers from penalties and interest rate for late payment of water and sewage rent charges, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating the 60th anniversary of Community College of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the Community College of Philadelphia and its legislators for a day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the month of October 2025 as Manufacturing Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good afternoon, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of that privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and remembering the life and legacy of Vincent "Mr. Vince" Termini Sr., the beloved owner of Termini Brothers Bakery.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce that I'm excited to introduce today.
This resolution will be placed, would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of the acclaimed musician D'Angelo, who chose his truth over any accolades or accomplishment, therefore achieving a success that leaves him with few peers.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
No bills and resolutions.
On behalf of Councilmember O'Neill, no bills or resolutions.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much. Want to go back to Councilmember O'Rourke. Just say for the record, no bills and resolutions for Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
No, sir.
Just say, no bills and resolutions for Councilmember Brooks.
No bills or resolutions for Councilmember Brooks today.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President. We only got two resolutions to share.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
An ordinance amending Section 10-503 of the Philadelphia Code to prohibit the unlawful trading, theft, and trafficking of catalytic converters and motor vehicle parts containing precious metals, and to increase penalties, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Sidenhamp Street, Banango Street, North Smedley Street, and West Tioga Street.
It's the cupcakes distracting me, but this bill will be referred to appropriate committee. Come on, Member Phillips. Oh, bro. Lonely up here. I'm just joking. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am introducing one privileged resolution with, co-introduced with Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you very much. Would the Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October as Children's Health Month in the City of Philadelphia and affirming the city's commitment to children's overall well-being.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla for a report from the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250654, an ordinance amending Chapter 17-1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to add two additional business community members to the Economic Opportunity Review Committee, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 250646, an ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter entitled Minimum Training for Security Officers, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Commerce, Economic Development, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the two bills read into the record be approved with a suspension of the rules to be read at the next session of council. Till our first reading today.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Just for the record, we are moving the rules of council to be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by Member Squilla, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second? It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today.
The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committees with the suspension of rules have been deemed to have a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore-Richardson for a motion concerning the bills and resolution on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars today.
It has been moved in properly.
Numbers 240872, 250575, 250576, 250652, 250653, 250706, 250710, 250711, 250712, 250713, 250714, 250715, 250716, 250719, 250723, 250724, 250725, 250771, and 250772.
It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Council, just read by Councilmember Gilmore-Richardson. All in favor, please indicate saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have, have it, sorry. The motion carries, and we will consider the bill consent agenda shortly. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore-Richardson for the purpose of calling up any additional bills and resolution on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 250853, 250864, 250869, 250870, 250879, 250882, 250493, 250718, 250770, and 250774. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. 250303 and 250721, 250493 and 250718 are being amended.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will now consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by having your name given to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called under order in which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public comments each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today's time limit will be one minute. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold favor to the one-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once the one minute have passed, the light will turn red, and the Sergeant at Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitions comments. The purpose of one minute today is because we have significant repetitions comment. I will also now ask for the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker. And the first speaker, from my understanding, is our Senator Art Haywood. Thank you for joining us today, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President, all members, all people who are gathered here. I am so glad to join you for Dignity Month. And it's already been shared, whether you're black, brown, or white, rich or poor, urban and suburban, however you might identify, we all have dignity. And yesterday was International Dignity Day throughout the entire world, and folks celebrated dignity across our globe. Desmond Tutu, Muhammad Ali, singer Peter Gabriel, they were some of the first signers on to Dignity Day. And the core of dignity is a African standard. It is. I am because we are. That is the core of the dignity principle. And we have such great representation in our city council, showing that there's diverse face and background, that all the worth of everyone is represented here in this chamber. Over a hundred countries have recognized dignity. Germany has dignity in their constitution to protect it as a result of the Holocaust. South Africa, after apartheid, put dignity in their constitution. I have a dignity constitutional amendment that I am proposing for Pennsylvania. I know that we are short on time, and I don't want to really go over, but I do want to say a few more things. We in this city and in this state can overcome some of the gross dignity violations that are in our community. The dignity violation of starvation in Gaza. The dignity violation of paying people eleven, twelve dollars an hour. The dignity violations of not fully funding our schools. But we can overcome it. And this is all what Dignity Day and Dignity Month is about. Bringing to our attention how we treat each other. There's a couple of events happening that I do want to share. Tonight at Woodmere Theater, a fantastic presentation is going to be made by Professor Stacy Hawkins on the topic of diversity and dignity. We've seen some tensions there. Later this month at Arcadia University, we're going to have a conversation about free speech and dignity. We've seen some tensions there. So I want to thank my colleagues, all who are here. Special thanks to Councilman Phillips. Special thanks to you, Council President, and to all who are gathered here today. Please take a moment to appreciate each other. Please take a moment to recognize, even though there may be differences, and there are going to be, we can still speak to each other with dignity. Thank you so much.
May we, may we have Dr. Alicia Marshall, Jarrett Johnson, Ashley Gilmore, Jeremy Blattstein, and William Tong also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Alicia Marshall, and I am the interim president at the Community College of Philadelphia. The last time I was here, about five months ago, I was asking you all for money. So I'm happy to be here on a more positive note today, not asking for anything, but celebrating what I think is an important day, legislator for a day, with so many of our students here from the Community College of Philadelphia. If I could just have all the students stand that are here today, just please stand, our Community College of Philadelphia students. It is truly an honor to join our Community College of Philadelphia students, faculty, and staff for this important occasion. Legislator for a day offers our students a firsthand look at how City Council serves the people of Philadelphia, and it reinforces the value of civic engagement and education. Today, thirty-four of our students are participating, seventeen of whom will be shadowing City Council members that you've seen, and seventeen who will serve as CCP Votes Student Ambassadors. Their involvement reflects what CCP stands for. Learning through experience, leadership through service, and growth through opportunity. Experiences like this empower our students to understand how policy shapes community and how their voices can truly make a difference. I thank everyone from our faculty and staff to our city council partners for making this day possible. This year, as CCP celebrates our 60th anniversary, we reflect with pride on six decades of changing lives and expanding opportunity for Philadelphians. We remain committed to keeping our doors open to all who seek to learn, advance, and contribute to this city's future. Today's engagement with City Council reminds us that education is not only about what happens in the classroom, it is about preparing our students to participate, to lead, and to serve. On behalf of the entire Community College of Philadelphia community, I On behalf of the entire Community College of Philadelphia community, I extend sincere thank you to Councilmember Jeffrey Young, Council President, and the entire Philadelphia City Council for honoring our sixtieth anniversary and for supporting our legislator-for-a-day program. Together, we affirm our shared belief that investing in education is investing in Philadelphia's future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President. This sixty seconds is nowhere near enough time to talk about the impact that Janae has made on Philly, city council, and me, but I'm going to try. I've genuinely never met somebody so thoughtful and intentional, and y'all already know this from her work across the city, and I know this as her deputy, but today I want to talk about my friend. I started here when I was twenty, almost seven years ago, and I feel blessed to have been assigned tasks to support her work because that chance meeting changed my life. It gave me a true role model, a selfless mentor, and a big sister, and there is so much to learn from Janae. The kindness that she shows every individual she comes across, the patience she showcases listening to my rambling thoughts and rants, the consideration of staying invested in every minute detail of my life, I can decidedly say that I'm better for being guided by her hand. She's taught me how to be a better public servant, friend, and community member, and I feel incredibly lucky to be in her classroom and on her team. This is obviously bittersweet for me, but I know and I hope she knows that she is just a phone call away. Janae, I love you and I wish you the best.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and members of the city council. My name is Jarrett Johnson. I serve as the lead transit organizer for fiscal advocacy, speaking in support of Bill Number 250770 regarding the speed cameras on Erie Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, Columbus Boulevard. These corridors are among our deadliest stretches in Philadelphia and are also a critical step towards saving lives and changing dangerous behaviors toward drivers. Studies have proved that it will benefit not only drivers, but will also benefit pedestrians. Their true value is measured in lives saved, not dollars collected. I have friends and colleagues, which are, some of them are, which are here today, who ride their bikes along one of these intersections, and I always think about their safety every single day. These cameras will provide consistent, unbiased enforcement that will give officers relief and focus on other duties. In conclusion, I thank you, city council, for taking time to consider, considers, considerably for taking this bill seriously, to authorize this bill for final improvement. Thank you for your time in bringing this bill into consideration.
We have Jeremy Blattstein, then William Tong, Benjamin Giffen, Kate Perez, Alisa Yuse, and Jenny Barcobo also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Blattstein. Two minutes of speeches today. That's actually longer than the October 2025 Philadelphia Land Bank meeting held last Tuesday. I'm here not on behalf of Big Bike, but in my personal capacity as a concerned Philadelphian and a transit advocate. I'm here to speak in support of the Land Bank bills and Bill Number 250712 and Bill Number 250718, two of the nineteen bills, as you highlighted, Council President, that were passed out of the Streets Committee last meeting. But let's be clear, it should have been twenty. Councilmember Jay Young held the bill at the hearing for the City Hall bike lane, even though the lane is already mostly built. Safety over everything, safety over everything. I want to commend Councilmember Jamie Godier for Bill Number 250712 on parking regulations in the Third District. She made safety a priority. I also support Bill Number 250718, which creates parking regulations in loading zone on Pine and Spruce Streets. This bill is critical. We need to pass it quickly. Groups like Friends of Pine and Spruce are wasting resources fighting common sense safety improvements. My concern is with the amendment that narrowed the bill to only Pine and Spruce. This adds more red tape for every future parking and loading zone change by Otis and Streets Department. Let's not make safety harder, let's make it easier, let's make it faster. Grow Philly 22 Milli. Raise your hand if you know what happened at the last Philadelphia Land Bank meeting. Probably not unless you follow me on Twitter or Instagram, Next Philly Mayor. But two members of the Land Bank Board are no longer on the board, and they did not have quarmed to hold October 2025 Land Bank meeting. Hopefully, this is the first step in improving the Land Bank Board to carry out Mayor Parker's ver- version, vision of thirty thousand homes and move more than eight thousand lots held to build more housing to help grow Philly 22 Milli. And of course, we're talking about SEPTA. Only forty-six of the two hundred and twenty-five silver-lined cars have been inspected, and we need to force Harrisburg to give more funding. Ride the ride, fund SEPTA. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Blattstein, just for the record also, that Pine and Spruce bill has been amended on the cover of wider area in the second and the first, and then also, we have a hearing coming up regarding SEPTA and the rail cars, so, you know, we on the job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you.
You're welcome.
Hello, good morning. My name is Will Tong. I'm a, yep, I'm a resident of Southwest Philly and here as a husband and father raising a child in this city. I am here in support of Bill 250712, which will enable the city to regulate parking and loading on Forty-seventh Street in my, in my neighborhood. This bill is part of a larger plan that reconfigured Forty-seventh Street to be far safer, and I am proud of Councilmember Godier for prioritizing safety here. Forty-seventh Street is on the high injury network, and it's among the most dangerous streets in our city. The reconfiguration of Forty-seventh has had a tangible and direct daily benefit to me and my family. My daughter has to cross Forty-seventh Street on her way to seventh grade, my wife needs to cross it to get to work in her gym, and since the reconfiguration, the cars here drive slower, calmer, and it's noticeably less stressful for all of us. I am sympathetic to folks who are skeptical of this bill because they are losing the convenience of parking where they're used to and maybe driving more quickly down the street, and I hope they see things from my perspective, where the old layout encouraged reckless driving. For the forty-five crashes on this corridor and four serious injuries in the, in the past five years, the status quo has failed them. For my family who has struck by a car in this neighborhood, the status quo has failed my family. I want to thank Councilmember Godier for prioritizing safety here on Forty-seventh Street and throughout the entire Third District. Let's wipe Forty-seventh Street off our high injury network map. Let's pass this bill. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Giffen. I'm here to speak in support of Bill 250718 as amended. I'm, for over fifteen years, a homeowner, a car owner, and a bicycle owner in the center city section of Philadelphia. And by passing the loading zones bill, this city will improve life for homeowners, car owners, and bicycle owners all over the city, especially in Center City. I want to just respond very briefly to two things that I've heard opponents of this ordinance say. One is that there's no opportunity for public input. There has been ample opportunity for public input. The public has come and testified at lots of hearings, communicated with lots of members and city officials, and what the public has said is, we don't want more process, we want loading zones and we want protected bike lanes, and we don't want to wait anymore. The other thing I want to respond to is the comment that there's no evidence of problems. I'm evidence of a problem. Last year, I was biking home from work and on the fifteen-hundred block of Spruce, an Uber pulled into the bike lane, a driver and a passenger in the back right flung the door open, knocked me into the pavement. I'm here testifying instead of being a grease spot on Spruce Street today because I was lucky enough that there was no truck coming up behind me. But there are lots of people with stories like mine, lots of evidence of the need. Thank you very much.
I'm Kate Perez, talking about dignity, and it only took the occupation one day to violate the ceasefire, killing seven Palestinians who were inspecting their home in East Gaza with warplanes and quadcopters covering all of Gaza, drone strikes in Con Union, and bombings in the north.
Could we do it on the bill, Ms. Perez? Work with me on that.
Can't help but remember that Israel's primary arms dealer is sitting comfortably in Member Young's district, wondering if those bombs left our ports. As the beacon of human rights, it's on Philadelphia to value the lives and rights of Palestinians who are being crushed with weapons made in our city, especially as we continue our sister-city relationship, diminishing our global reputation by excusing, ignoring, and enabling this livestream genocide. The occupation went back on their agreement to open the Rafa border.
Could we focus on affordable cost of living, task force?
They won't allow for medical evacuations or humanitarian aid to enter in defiance of international law and the biting ICJ ruling. Activists who tried to brace the siege were thrown in prison and tortured, something more than ten thousand Palestinian hostages aren't facing. Palestinians died in the street last night from the cold, and those with flu will not find medication as they still maintain the blockade. Where is their dignity? Where is ours? Arms embargo now.
We have Alisa Yuse, Jenny Barcobo. I'm sorry. Can Joanna Artero Cruz, Christine Cox, Ed McCauley, and Caleb Holtmeyer also make their way to the podium?
Hello, my name is Eliza Yauzzi. I am a District One resident. I am here in support of Bill Number 250718. I drive and I bike. I use Spruce and Pine to get to work. I wiped out on my bike going around a car parked in the loading zone on Spruce Street. Loading zones make sense as part of the overall design of the street. They give drivers a safe and legal space to stop temporarily. These spots are clearly needed. It is smart and practical to give the Streets Department authority to make these types of decisions and to make these loading zones formally legal. So that's why I support this bill. Thank you.
Ready? Good morning, Council President Johnson and city council members. My name is Jenny Bucardo-Dubé, and I live in Center City with my family, District Two. I'm here to testify in support of Bill 250718. Riding a bike in Center City is a privilege I enjoy daily, and I am deeply grateful for all the bike lanes throughout the city. Many of you are aware of the horrible crash where Barbara Friedas was killed at Eighteenth and Spruce last summer. Had there been protected bike lanes, Barbara would be alive today. I was walking by at that moment and saw her body lying in the street. That moment will always stay with me, and I would like to believe that she did not die in vain. Bike lanes were created for bikes, not cars. If a vehicle parks in a bike lane, they are jeopardizing the lives of bikers. With loading zones, these dangers can be avoided, and people can have better and, most importantly, safer places to unload. Additionally, loading zones become parking spaces at night. As a city that has experienced tragedies due to unsafe bike lanes, we should realize that impatience is not worth a human life. Thank you.
Good morning, Buenos dias. My name is Joanna Artero Cruz, and I'm the executive director and president of Women Against Abuse. On behalf of Women Against Abuse and all of our valued partners who are here with us today, I'd like to thank council members Quezil Osada and Kendra Brooks, as well as all the distinguished city council for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month here in Philadelphia. Domestic violence impacts one in three women and one in four men. Each of us knows someone affected by domestic violence, a mother, a sister, friend, colleague, or neighbor. Every day, survivors in the city of Philadelphia make the courageous choice to seek safety. They reach out to our hotline, arrive at our shelters, and look to advocates for help. But right now, the resources we rely on are at risk. Women Against Abuse serves more than ten thousand individuals each year. For over fifty years, we provide a safe place and a refuge, and we must continue to stick together, to fight together, and we stand in solidarity with all of you, and we are so grateful for your ongoing support, not just today, but year-round, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Hello, my name is Christine Cox. I'm the co-founder, artistic, and executive director of Ballet X, Philadelphia's premier contemporary ballet. I want to thank councilmember Rue Landau for this recognition of this milestone moment for my company. I'm a born and raised West Philadelphia girl. I danced in the Pennsylvania Ballet for thirteen years. At the age of ten, I started dancing and fell in love with movement. I'm completely blessed to be, have had a lifetime doing something I love. Love what you do, love your life. My company employs over thirty people, and I really believe that, yes, we are a Philadelphia sports town, but we are an arts town. And the arts really make this city so special. They, they invite people to move to Philadelphia and create a life here. I have dancers and choreographers coming from all over the world to Philadelphia, and I represent this city. In twenty years, we've built a dance education program that's in six Philadelphia public schools and sparring kids to dance. We're the resident dance company of the Man Center for the Performing Arts, and we donate tickets to Philadelphians all over our great city. Thank you so much to the council members for your work and your service. Thank you, President.
You're welcome.
We have Ed McCauley, Ed McCauley, Caleb Holtmeyer, May Bonnie Halad, Susan Burt, Stephen Berquist, Marie Fleming, and Roshi Weisberg also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Ed McCauley, and I'm director of real estate development for Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia. I would like to thank councilmember Jeffrey Young for his sponsorship of Bill Number 250719 and for his ongoing support of Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia. Thank you also to the Planning Commission for its support of this bill. Bill Number 250719 seeks to amend the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Nineteenth Street, Wilt Street, Gratz Street, and Montgomery Avenue. The proposed zoning designations will be amended from RSA V to RM I and CMX II zoning designations. Such remapping of these parcels, owned for many years by Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia, will allow Habitat to fulfill its mission to create new affordable housing and homeownership opportunities, as well as develop long vacant and underutilized lots. Habitat envisions providing affordable residential dwelling units, as well as commercial space that will allow Habitat to expand its offices, to better serve the community and the residents through programs and educational workshops. The development proposes approximately twenty new affordable housing units, strengthening the fabric of the community, as well as office space, which will include a larger meeting room that may accommodate community meetings and various programs, including owner-occupied home repair and affordable homeownership. In conclusion, Habitat respectfully requests that council approve passage of this bill to allow this important and vital development project to move forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Caleb Holtmeyer. I'm here today speaking on behalf of Philly Bike Action, and I got to say, I hear a story like Ben's all the time, a lot of people reach out to me and email me about their near-misses on our streets in Philadelphia of almost being hit by a car or being hit and injured. So this is a frequent problem. I want to speak in favor in Bill, in favor of Bill 250718. I want to thank city council for raising this loading zone legislation to improve safety and accessibility of our streets. I understand there was concern that the previous version of the bill only focused on Spruce and Pine streets. I appreciate that the amended version broadened its scope, so thank you, city council, for doing that. When the loading zones were introduced, Spruce and Pine streets were made safer overnight as users of the bike lane no longer had to swerve into traffic as frequently to avoid parked cars. I wanted to answer past rhetoric that bike lane parking is not dangerous, but may be a convenient position to take if one's perspective is behind the steering wheel at their front door and in the bike lane. It only takes a little empathy to see the danger posed to our biking neighbors with various levels of ability. For example, if you have glaucoma, a condition that reduces peripheral vision, you may not see the car passing over your shoulder. If you have hearing loss, you may not hear the vehicle about to speed past you. You can only imagine the hazard to parents teaching kids to bike as they carefully navigate around parked cars. Our city council to pass this legislation to legalize loading zones in Center City. Most Philadelphians just want a place to park without endangering their neighbors. No one wants to see the headline, "Another Philadelphian Kill on Spruce Street."
Good morning. Thank you to council for giving me the opportunity to testify today. My name is Bonnie Haldah. I live in Society Hill, and I support Bill 250758 and its amendments. I've lived in Society Hill for over thirty-five years. I previously served on the Society Hill Civic Association in a variety of roles. One most recently is the chair of the Communications Committee. We always strove to engage our community and get their opinions before making actions, but that's not happening anymore. I no longer serve on the board. The current board recently voted to give twenty-five thousand dollars to the law firm that's engaged by the Friends of Pine and Spruce to fight the city over these, these types of laws, such as no stopping and the loading zones. I am here because I want my voice to be heard. I want here because I want my voice to be heard in support of this bill. I am here because five years ago, a wife of a good friend of mine was struck and killed by a motorist while she was riding her bike. I'm here because I believe this bill is a positive step to enhance safety for bicyclists while providing for the convenience for loading zones for residents, contractors, and delivery people. Please don't listen to the angry voices. Please listen to those of us that are not being represented and those of us who want to see a progressive, vibrant city. Thank you.
Good morning or afternoon. My name's Susan, sorry, my name's Susan Burt Collins, and I live at Fifth and Pine. I was formerly president of the Society Hill Civic Association, and I am speaking to give you folks some insight into how things have transpired such that we have given twenty-five thousand dollars to the group that is suing the city of Philadelphia and costing you great deal of money and time fussing about this. The fact is, our community desperately wants a compromise. The fact is, our community desperately wants a compromise. We have tried, and last year as President, I put together a task force to find that compromise. There have been numerous meetings and Councilwoman Squillit and others have been present at those meetings and have heard, there are two sides. There are lots of people in our community who are not being heard by the Board of the Civic Association who want to find a compromise where we have bike safety so people like me, an old lady, can happily ride my bike safely as I get from place to place. And also, young children can ride and learn how to ride a bike safely on our streets, but also accommodate somebody who may need to get a handicapped person into their home briefly. We have a compromise, I even have the compromise that we, that this group put together. There were two sides and I'm glad to distribute it. Thank you very much for giving me time to speak and present review.
Thank you.
I'm John Stephen Berquist, here speaking in favor of Bills 250712 and 250718, creating loading zones in West Philadelphia and Center City. I'm a cycle commuter and proud resident of my adopted home of Southwest Philadelphia, but I originally come from Minneapolis, a city famous for its impressive urban cycling infrastructure. There are useful protected bike lanes and separated paths crossing the entire city. They can take you from residential neighborhoods in both the wealthy and non-wealthy parts of town to the bustling university campuses to right to the downtown business district. Where I come from, it is completely normal to see children, elders, and young professionals of all social classes sharing any of the many protected bike routes at their own pace to get to their destination safely. They might be on a carbon fiber road bike, they might be on a hand-me-down kid's bike with training wheels, they might be on an electric wheelchair, because good bike lanes aren't just for bikes. I have seen firsthand the many benefits that safe, predictable, and useful micro-mobility infrastructure brings to people of all ages, incomes, and abilities. Like any cyclist in Philadelphia, I do ride on Spruce and Pine in Center City sometimes, but I personally ride on Fairmount Avenue every day to get to work. Almost every day, someone is blocking the bike lane because there's no place to park for deliveries, picking someone up, whatever. I see families and kids forced into traffic at least once a week, just in my few minutes a day on the corridor. This is a dangerous situation for everyone who lives, works, and travels on Fairmount Avenue. Loading zones would help all these road users get to their destination safely. I fully support legalizing loading zones anywhere in Greater City and, Greater Center City and University City. Thank you.
We have Marie Fleming, Roshi Weisberg, May David Alexander Jenkins, Stanley Horowitz, Nilo Meiring, Albert Meister, and Linnea Bond also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Rachael Weisberg. I'm here to speak in support of Bill Number 250712. I want to thank Councilmember Gattie for her leadership on this issue. I live at the corner of 47th and Hazel, so I'm like directly affected by this bike lane each and every day. I work, my office faces that corner, and I actually had to close my blinds recently because I would just watch cars blow those stop signs all day. I even watched a car run into a stop sign and it caused the street to be closed for a day. I actually have no idea what happened to that person, but it's pretty crazy. And so I just want to say for me, as a cyclist, as a driver, the bike lane has been a huge improvement for my life. I actually also now work and I hear kids biking on the bike lane because they feel safe to do so, which is just how we should be living in a city. And I think it's great to have loading zones so that we have places for the cars to go because it's now one-way and if they double park, it would just be a disaster. So, thank you so much.
I'm here in support of, my name's Marie Fleming. I'm here in support of Dr. Beverly Wiley. Declaration of Independence, second paragraph. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." The Bill of Rights, the Bill of Rights, Amendment Four. Protection from unreasonable searches and seizures. The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Amendment Nine. Other rights kept by the people. The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people. The U.N. Convention Against Torture of 1984 prohibits torture under all circumstances, no exception. Countries must investigate and punish any act of torture.
Can we connect this to the Beverly Wiley Resolution? David Alexander Jenkins, please proceed.
Mr. President, Members and guests, David Alexander Jenkins, and I rise in support of Resolution 250879. Not simply as a policy measure, but also as a moral declaration that our city must reorder its priorities, that we must move from a survival of dignity to a neglect and restoration we gather in Philadelphia that has become a study of contradictions, if you will, a city of billion-dollar skylines and boarded-up homes, of expanding universities and evaporating opportunity, of corporate prosperity that often feeds on human despair. Beneath the glimmer of development lies a truth that we can no longer disguise. Our people, our brothers and sisters, are living through a crisis of affordability, of access, and of belonging. Every day, thousands of our neighbors face eviction, hunger, homelessness, not because they lack discipline or faith, but because our systems have forgotten that they exist. We have allowed the machinery of progress to run on the blocks of those and on the backs of those who can least bear its weight. More than pretty language penned to paper, Member O'Rourke's resolution is a mirror held up to the conscience of this city. It asks us whether we still believe that governance is an act of care. It demands that we look beyond the metrics of profit toward the measure of human worth. You and I know that the soul of Philadelphia is not found in its skyline. It lives in the people, in the grandmother keeping heat on her grandchildren, the neighbor searching for work, the young mother choosing between rent and medicine. Our crisis, as much as it is economic, is moral. It is a slow corrosion that occurs when the measure of human life is left to the market logic, but today, we can reclaim the heart of Philadelphia, one that lifts from the ground up. Resolution 250879, champions of Philadelphia, which is deserved of more than survival. It champions of Philadelphia, a city defined by love.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Stan Horowitz. I'm a 64-year-old Fairmount resident and bicycle commuter. I'm here to express support for Bill 250718 and urge every City Council member to pass it without limiting its scope only to Spruce and Pine streets so us bicyclists can ride safely in Center City. Spruce and Pine definitely need to be made more safer, but ideally, the Departments of, the Department of Streets should have the same authorities including, included in this bill citywide. As a bicycle commuter who rides throughout Center City, limiting the scope of this bill only to Spruce and Pine would limit the city's commitment to Vision Zero. Thank you.
Excuse me, Stan Horowitz, Stan. Just for the record, the bill has been amended beyond the scope of Spruce and Pine. Just want to let you know that for the record.
Hi, everyone, my name is Nico Meiring and I want to thank Councilmember Landau for congratulating my organization, Young Involved Philadelphia, on 25 years. I welcome everybody here today. It's a real honor to be here with all of you and I want to talk a little bit about our organization. Young Involved Philadelphia started as a dynamic idea for a big, dynamic city, and that idea is that civic engagement is something we can all do every day. 25 years later, we are active every day, not just on election day, but on park cleanup day, City Council hearing day, and even on random Tuesdays when you have to help your neighbor. Our board, some of my friends here behind me today, started this year as colleagues, but by now, they are, just as I said, my friends. And so, my friends, I want to thank you for being our subject matter experts. You keep our lights on, you raise over $15,000 for us, and you helped us create over 60 new board members through our Board Prep program. Thank you so much, Councilmember Landau. Go find us at YIaffiliate.org and thank you to our incredible board, the real heroes. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Council President and Councilmembers, for giving me a moment to speak with you. My name is Albert Meister. I'm an 82-year-old everyday bicyclist. And if I have trouble speaking to you today because I can't locate specific words, specific words, or I lose my train of thought, it's because I'm a survivor. Forty years ago, I was struck down by a truck while riding my bicycle and every day, I'm reminded of that disability. And I'm here to plead with you to end this, to end the threats that are given to the vulnerable folks on bicycles. You know the John, I don't have to repeat the reasons. But I'd also like to say to you, in defense of my fellow Society Hill residents, those on the other side of this issue who see, who have brought a suit against the city, many feel that they are uncaring and unknowing, and not very nice people, but on the contrary, they are. They just don't know. They don't know how difficult and how dangerous it is for us on the street. So please, for God's sake, pass those ordinance that gives us the protection that we need while we're on our bicycles. Thanks for listening.
We have Linnea Bond, May Rashawn Hall, Teresa Fio, Isabel Melvin, and Raymond King also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon, my name is Linnea Bond. I am here today speaking for myself as a District Five resident, as well as on behalf of Physicians for Social Responsibility Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania, Philadelphia medical professionals are deeply concerned about the financial, environmental, and health costs of data centers proliferating across PJM's service area. With limited time, I'll highlight just three concerns. First, when data centers are built, electric costs skyrocket. According to a Bloomberg analysis, wholesale electricity costs as much as 267% more than it did five years ago in areas near data centers. Proposed data centers in Bucks and Luzern are already likely to increase costs for significantly energy-burdened Philadelphians. Our gas rates will rise November 28th. The, our electric rates went up 10% this past January and again in June. Second, a single data center can consume the amount of energy of a city. If this council truly cares about children's health beyond the month of October, including our near and long-term futures, put your action where your resolutions are. The only thing that will prevent increasing wildfires, floods, and worsening heat is deep energy reduction simultaneous with renewable energy conversion. Data centers drive escalating energy consumption, and specifically fossil fuels, as new dirty gas and coal generators are added to power the grid and also built as generators for individual data centers. Third, these generators pollute the air with nitrous oxides, PM 2.5, carbon dioxide, VOCs, and constant noise. Data centers are part of a massive financial bet made by tech giants who now desperately need us to take on the costs of that investment, but our community's health cannot afford data center proliferation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Rashawn Hall. First, I would just at the top, like to thank Council President Kenyatta Johnson and Councilwoman Rue Landau for introducing this resolution to this councilmatic body. It is an honor to stand here, not just as Rashawn Hall, but on behalf of Young Involved Philadelphia, an organization that has spent 25 years asking the fundamental question of our city's rising generation, will they or won't they? For a quarter century, YIP's answer has been simple, they will if we invite them. YIP has been founded 25 years ago to serve one goal, to create a space where young people such as myself can engage with Philadelphia's civic ecosystem, participate in government such as this gathering today, and be an advocate for those who want to get involved but don't know where to start. Fast forward to present day, our generation has amassed over 6,000 members and our flagship program Board Prep has graduated over 1,000 participants that serve on boards throughout Philadelphia and the region. Young people doing the work and now, our task has been to turn from will they or won't they to they've already done. Our latest product, the State of Young Philadelphia Report, serves as YIP's first research product aiming to inform policymakers, civic leaders, and the public about the realities and trends facing young adults in Philadelphia. If you are under the sound of my voice, I courage, I cordially invite you to our annual State of Young Philadelphia convening this Saturday, October 6, 18th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. On behalf of YIP, I thank you for believing in the power of young people and to make this city better and for helping to make sure that when Philadelphia asks, will they or won't they, we can proudly answer, we already did. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Teresa Fio and I'm here to testify in opposition to Bills 250712 and 250718. We are opposed to granting the Streets Department blanket authority to revise, alter, or eliminate parking or loading zones on not only 47th Street, but any Philadelphia street using only their broad discretion without community input. Their recent decisions demonstrate that their discretion is flawed and often exercised without regard for context-specific design principles, input from local residents, or best practices in traffic engineering. The reconfiguration of 47th Street, installed in tandem with the 48th Street bike lane last year, illustrates this failure. Over the past two and a half years, Otis has said the following, "We didn't know that Star Harbor was a busy senior center. We didn't know that EMT and fire trucks wouldn't be able to fit down the road after our installation of the bike lane. We didn't know that the ADA ramp for seniors was on the 47th Street west side. We didn't know that St. Francis dismissal was mostly on Springfield Avenue, and we still don't have speed bumps after two months. We didn't know that SEPTA is a, SEPTA, our road is a bus detour, so we were gonna make the road too narrow and the turning radius wouldn't fit. We didn't know that the 47th and 48th Street weren't on the high-injury network at all. We didn't know that SEPTA's bus stop prevents a wheelchair-bound resident, a 62-foot by 16-foot blocked off Ballard station on 48th Street blocks a wheelchair-bound resident from even getting out of her house. There's no CCT van that can get to her. We didn't know that there were EV car owners on the east side of the road. We didn't know that the businesses were consulted. We didn't know the initial meetings of 500 surveys were mostly bike lobby advocates who didn't live in the neighborhood and that the initial meetings weren't inclusive of anybody in the King Sessing and Gray's Ferry neighborhood who are really upset about all the additional traffic. And when a child dies as a result of these changes, what will you say then? We didn't know."
We have Isabel Melvin, then Raymond King, May Dan Becker, Obona Haggins, Lakeisha Anthony, and Zachary Mackey also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon, Isabel Melvin, Council President Johnson, members of City Council. Thank you for what you do for the city of Philadelphia. I support loading zones, Bill 250718, Bill 250712. These bills will make me feel safer as I walk and bike on Spruce and Pine and when I ride through my old neighborhood in West Philly on 47th Street. Thank you for making me feel even safer with the amendment to Bill 250718. I'm hopeful that this amendment for the loading zones gives the city authority to cover all of Center City. The pedestrian safety, bicycle, and accessibility infrastructure has improved so much over the years. Thank you for listening. I also want to feel safer walking and riding near City Hall. Please pass City Hall Bike Lane Bill. Thank you.
My name is Raymond King and I'm here to speak about Bill 250718 and urge passage of that bill because, as other people have said, it will create a safer space for bicyclers and motor vehicles because when you have to block bike lanes for loading, it creates a danger. I mean, a bike has to go out into traffic or it's just a dangerous condition. And I urge the passage of this bill. Thank you very much. Okay, bye.
Good afternoon, my name is Zachary Mackey and I'm the manager of Community Engagement at Lutheran Settlement House and I want to thank and support Councilmembers Brooks and Lozada. And I want to thank and support Councilmembers Brooks and Lozada for their bill on domestic violence. I want to speak in support of it because I'm a survivor of a school shooting, Oakland Elementary in Greenwood, South Carolina. It's not often spoke about or heard of, and I know you're wondering, what does a school shooting have to do with domestic violence? Upon further research into the shooter's history, he witnessed his mother be abused by his father. So I work, and the work that I do and the work that we do in the city, the domestic violence organizations, is very important. Because I dream of a world where no one else has to be a survivor of not only domestic violence, but could be affected from it and then end up being a survivor of a school shooting. So thank you, councilmembers in the city of Philadelphia, for your work and bills on domestic violence. The work we do is important, and it matters, because programs like ours, Students Talking About Relationships, prevents teens on becoming victims of domestic violence. We teach them about healthy and unhealthy relationships. We work to make it possible for survivors to walk through any door and be believed and know how to be referred to resources from their barber shop to City Hall to the grocery store. We're working so people can walk through those doors and get referred to resources like ours. Thank you.
We have Obona Hagens, Lakisha Anthony, Hannah Kohler, General Muti Ajummu Asabora, Jordan Teicher, and Corey Jackson also make their way to the podium.
Obona Hagens, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. As we discuss this resolution on the cost of living, we must begin with truth. We must first examine the cost of living of the American freedmen. There can be no genuine conversation about global opportunities when the American freedmen have not been positioned properly. We will not be positioned properly until we have an Office of Freedman Affairs, an agency to protect their rights and ensure justice under the 13th and 14th Amendments. For generations, the badges, vestiges, and incidents of slavery have shaped the cost of living for our people through home devaluations, employment discrimination, and structural racism, and exclusion from wealth-building opportunities. This Saturday at 12:00 noon, the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen, we're having a political wellness checkup at the Lutheran Seminary, 7301 Germantown Avenue. And next Sunday, October 26th, at Love Park here in Philadelphia, we commemorate the 30th anniversary of the Million Man March. The goal then was atonement, and now we will raise the estate of the American freedmen. Obona Hagens, over and out.
Good afternoon. My name is Lakisha Anthony. I'm the Senior Manager of Advocacy at War Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence. It is both an honor and a privilege to represent War and to stand in solidarity with Women Against Abuse as we recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you to Councilmembers Brooks and Lozada, and full City Council for recognizing DV Awareness Month. War's mission is to eliminate all forms of sexual violence through specialized treatment services, comprehensive prevention education programs, and advocacy in for the rights of victims of sexual assault. Domestic violence is a persuasive and often hidden issue that affects individuals from every corner of our community. It transcends age, gender, race, and socioeconomic status. It impacts our neighborhoods, our friends, our coworkers, and oftentimes our families. Yet, for too long, it's remained silent. This month is a time for us to lift the silence and to break the cycle of isolation and remind those affected that they are not alone. It is a time to raise awareness but also reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that all survivors have support they need to heal. The relationship between domestic violence and sexual violence is deeply intertwined, and often two forms of violence that coexist, abusive relationships. While they are distinct in terms of their specific behaviors, they share many common elements, including power and control dynamics, manipulation, and the use of fear and domination of a victim. The recognition of this month is also a step in raising awareness, enhancing local enforcement efforts, and expanding victim services. And I thank you to all of those who are here today to support YIP, and we thank them for leading the charge in the DV space. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Hannah Kaler, and I'm an intern with the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia and Families for Safe Streets. Families for Safe Streets is a group comprised of family members who have lost loved ones in traffic crashes throughout the greater Philadelphia area. Thank you, Council President, for this time. The Bicycle Coalition supports Bill Number 250718 about loading zones in Center City because it affirms that the city has the authority to manage all parking and loading regulations in Center City. Updating loading zones and parking is important for adapting roads to meet the needs of today. Good curb management can help alleviate congestion, reduce crashes, and help us all share the road more safely. I'm also here as a West Philadelphia resident to speak in support of Bill Number 250712, introduced by my councilmember, Jamie Gaudier, authorizing loading zones to support 47th Street Bike Lane. It's a huge improvement over what how the road used to be. Also here to speak in support of Bill 250770, authorizing automated speed cameras on three additional corridors. And finally, we urge councilmembers to bring Bill Number 250649 up for a vote to authorize a bike lane around City Hall. Thank you for your time.
Hotep after huru. My name is General Muti. General is my title. Muti Ajummu Saburu is my name. I want to launch on 250303. It was presented by Councilmember Thomas, and my views are in no way slight to Member Thomas. The brother just didn't understand. First and foremost, I want to talk about maybe decades ago, I reached out to you, Mr. President, and you supported then, and I know you support now, ending the sentence of death by imprisonment for children. You was the first one to come aboard, and for a long time, you was the only one until other folks, until we convinced other folks who before wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole.
House Bill 1999 introduced as a state representative of members...
Yes, sir.
...on one clarity.
That's correct. That's correct.
Providing individuals who are serving a life sentence the opportunity to come home for parole before was the actual popular criminal justice reform thing to do. Go ahead, sir.
Indeed. All right, so now, the resolution I oppose vehemently, simply because it sets out to reward some of them same judges who, the bill that you supported to end death by imprisonment for children, these are the same, some of the same judges. Now, we want to turn around and reward them. They don't need to be rewarded, they needed to be excoriated because they made Philadelphia the scourge of the world, literally, no hyperbole. The United States was the number-one nation in the world, led the world in sentencing children to death by imprisonment. Pennsylvania led America, and Philadelphia led Pennsylvania. And then you stood against it, and I pray that you still stand with it, and I never want to reward the judges for doing what's wrong. They made Philadelphia the scourge of the world. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Corey Jackson. I'm here to propose the street renaming of 5100 Block of Master Street to Dr. Damon B. Jones Way. Dr. Damon B. Jones is a native of West Philadelphia and has dedicated his life to the betterment of the city of Philadelphia, particularly the youth, incarcerated individuals, marginalized communities. His commitment to service, leadership, and faith has profoundly impacted the lives of countless individuals. Dr. Jones has served on numerous boards and commissions appointed by local, state, and state leaders, including the Philadelphia Board of Ethics and the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections Review Committee. His leadership as a commissioner for the Review Committee, I mean, his leadership as a commissioner for the Upper Darby Township Civil Service Commission and the Mayor's Commission on African-American Males highlights his unwavering commitment to public service. Dr. Jones is a true community leader who has dedicated his life to improving the lives of others. The renaming of the 5100 Block of Master Street to Dr. Damon B. Jones Way would be a lasting tribute to his tireless efforts to uplift his community. It would also serve as a reminder to the current and future generations that individuals from the various streets of Philadelphia can make a profound impact on society through dedication, faith, and service. Thank you for your time.
We have Dan Becker and Corey Jackson. Jordan Teicher.
My name is Jordan Teicher. I live in West Philly at 50th and Larchwood. I'm here to speak in support of Bill Number 250712 regarding parking and loading on 47th Street. 47th Street Protected Bike Lane has been life-changing for me and my family. I ride my two-year-old son to daycare at 42nd and Spruce every weekday, and I use the 47th Street Lane when riding him back home. Riding a bike is the fastest and cheapest way for us to get to and from daycare, but it is not always the safest. Almost every time we're riding on a street without a protected lane, a car will speed past us, often mere inches away from us. The only time I know me and my son are truly safe on the road is when we are in a protected lane. I want to thank Councilmember Gaudier for giving me and so many others in the neighborhood more opportunities to travel safely in our community. There's so much more to do to make all of our streets safe for everyone. So let's bring the 47th Street Lane over the finish line. Let's get loading zones wherever they are needed throughout the city, and let's build the bike lane around City Hall so Philadelphians can safely get here and participate in our democracy. Thank you.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes public comments. Thank you. We will now consider today's bill on the consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to please read the title of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda or bills on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the bill or bills will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular second reading and final passage calendars. The clerk will now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 240872, Inordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewell Cafe in the Vicinity of 6618 Castor Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19149, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250575, Inordinance Regulating the Direction of Movement of Traffic on Gorgas Lane Between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street, under certain terms and conditions. 250576, Inordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewell Cafe in the Vicinity of 426 through 28 West Gerard Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions. 250652, Inordinance Authorizing a Dumpster Enclosure Encroachment at 78284 South 3rd Street, Philadelphia, PA 19147, under certain terms and conditions. 250653, Inordinance Authorizing a Stretery in the Right-of-Way Adjacent to 782 through 84 South 3rd Street, Philadelphia, PA 19147, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250706, Inordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Grange Avenue, Park Avenue, Chu Avenue, and Broad Street. Bill Number 250710, Inordinance Amending Section 3 of Inordinance, Bill Number 230033, approved April 12th, 2023, entitled, "Inordinance Authorizing the Vacating of Sloan Street from Ogden Street to its Terminus Northwardly Therefrom, and Reserving and Plotting Upon City Plan Number 106 a Right-of-Way for Sewage and Drainage Purposes and Public Utility Purposes Within the Lines of Said Zoned Street, Being Vacated and Authorizing the Acceptance of the Grant to the City of the Said Right-of-Way, Under Certain Terms and Conditions by Extending the Period for Compliance with the Terms and Conditions Stated therein." 250711, Inordinance Regulating the Direction of Movement of Traffic on Preston Street Between Spring Garden and Haverford, all under certain terms and conditions. 250712, Inordinance Authorizing the Streets Department to Establish Parking and Stopping Regulations on Both Sides of 47th Street Between Chestnut Street and King Sessing Street, under certain terms and conditions. 250713, Inordinance Establishing a Parking Regulation on South 62nd Street Between Chestnut Street and Walnut Street, King Sessing Avenue Between South 52nd Street and South 53rd Street, Sansom Street Between South 62nd Street and South 63rd Street, Palton Avenue Between North 42nd Street and North 43rd Street, Palton Avenue Between 43rd Street and Holden Street. 250714, Inordinance Establishing a Parking Regulation on Fountain Street Between Ridge Avenue and Hazelwood Lane, Larson Street Between Roxborough Avenue and Monastery Avenue, Overlook Road Between Mathias Street and Shawcroft Street, Gorgas Lane Between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street, Martin Street Between Ridge Avenue and Mitchell Street, Levering Street Between Crescent Street to Silverwood Street, Lamonty Street Between Peckham Street and Ridge Avenue, Dupont Street Between Fleming Street and Boone Street to Dead End, Monastery Avenue Between Mitchell Street and Ridge Avenue, Palisades Drive Between Capital View Drive and Heritage Drive and Merrick Road. 250715, Inordinance Establishing a Parking Regulation on Hobart Street Between Thompson Street and Master Street, Lancaster Avenue Between Jefferson Street and North 54th Street, North 59th Street Between Malvern Avenue and Woodcrest Avenue, Banbury Street Between Willard Street and Allegheny Avenue. 250716, Inordinance Amending Section 2 of Inordinance, Bill Number 230438, approved July 5, 2023, entitled, "Inordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Numbers 230 and 289 by Placing on the City Plan Two Irregularly Shaped Areas, One Located Along the Northeasternly Side of Ridge Avenue and Extending from a Point Northwest of the Wissa Hicken Creek to a Point Approximately 424 Feet Further Northwestwardly Therefrom, and the Other Located Along the Southwesternly Side of Ridge Avenue Extending from a Point Northwest of the Wissa Hicken Creek, Northwestwardly to the Southwesternly Side of Main Street, thereby Widening Said Ridge Avenue. And Authorizing the Opening of the Portions of the Said Widened Ridge Avenue Extending Through Property Owned by the City, Under Certain Terms and Conditions, Including the Dedication to the City of the Addition of the Bed of Ridge Avenue and Main Street, Being Placed on City Plan by Extending the Period of Compliance with the Terms and Conditions Therein." 250719, Inordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Wilt Street, Grad Street, Montgomery Avenue, and 19th Street. 250723, Inordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 370 by Striking from the City Plan Southampton Road from Bustleton Avenue to its Terminus Southeastwardly Therefrom, under certain terms and conditions. 250724, Inordinance Authorizing Various Encroachments in the Vicinity of 1,000 through 52 Frankfurt Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19125, under certain terms and conditions. 250725, Inordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewell Cafe in the Vicinity of 1313 through 17 South 3rd Street, Philadelphia, PA 19147, under certain terms and conditions. 250771, Inordinance Authorizing 3419 Kensington Partners or Subsequent Owner to Install, Own, and Maintain an Encroachment at 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250772, Inordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewell Cafe in the Vicinity of 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions.
These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, how do bill pass finally? The clerk shall call the roll, and upon being called, each councilmember shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Gaudier.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Young.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye on all bills.
And Councilmember Johnson.
Aye on all bills. Majority of all the members having voted in affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250853.
A resolution renaming the 1900 Block of South 20th Street, Dr. Beverly Wiley Way, in honor of Reverend Dr. Beverly Wiley, in recognition of her steadfast commitment to her church and dedicated service to the South Philadelphia community.
The Chair recognizes Charity Leader Gilmore Richardson for motion regarding Resolution Number 250853.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved properly. Second, if the Resolution Number 250853 be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250868.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2208 East Norr Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Kessie Lozada for motion regarding Resolution Number 250868.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the Resolution Number 250868 be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250869?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2323 through 31 North Fifth Street, 2322, 2324, 2326, 2328, 2330, 2332 North Orkney Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Kessie Lozada for motion regarding Resolution Number 250869.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the Resolution Number 250869 be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250870?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2407, 2409, 2411, 2413, 2415, 2439, 2441, 2443, 2445, and 2447 North Sixth Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Kessie Lozada for motion regarding Resolution Number 250870.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the Resolution Number 250870 be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250879?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to create a Cost of Living Task Force and to hold hearings on the cost of living in Philadelphia in order to study conditions and advance recommendations that ensure Philadelphia is a city where all residents can afford to live and thrive.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke for motion regarding Resolution Number 250879.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the Resolution Number 250879 be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250882?
A resolution renaming the intersection at 21st Street and Godfrey Avenue to Reverend C.L. Pryor Way, in honor of Reverend C.L. Pryor, a visionary leader, community servant, and longtime pastor of Corinthian Baptist Church of Germantown.
The Chair recognizes my Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass, for motion regarding Resolution Number 250882.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the Resolution Number 250882 be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250493?
Inordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, 9th Street, Erie Avenue, and Broad Street.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 250493. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in property second. If the amendment to Bill Number 250493 be adopted, all in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250718?
Inordinance amending Chapter 12-900 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Parking Regulations and Penalties," to confirm regulations adopted by the Department of Streets that establish and revise time limited and other rules restricting parking, stopping, and standing, including the establishment of time-restricted loading zones in the center-city area bounded by Spring Garden Street, the Schuylkill River, Bainbridge Street, and the Delaware River, and to reauthorize changes and additions to such parking rules in the center-city area by the Department of Streets on an ongoing basis, all under certain terms and conditions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 250718. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in property second. If the amendment to Bill Number 250718 be adopted, all in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250770?
Inordinance amending Chapter 12-3400 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety by Providing for the Use, Administration, and Enforcement of Automated Speed Cameras on Designated State Routes, under Certain Terms and Conditions."
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now is, how do bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 17, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Counsel will be at ease. Councilmember Brooks, would you like to be voted aye on all bills and resolutions?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Should be noted. Would the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250774?
Inordinance amending Section 9-3903 of the Philadelphia Code, Certificate of Frontal Suitability, require tenant documents to include the provision of voter registration information to tenants, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now is, how do bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 17, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing October 2025 as International Dignity Month and celebrating Philadelphia's commitment to upholding the worth and humanity of every resident, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, and also thank you to Senator Art Haywood for his work. I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution from the Northwest Affiliation Group be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. He's slick. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring congratulating Janey Monford for nearly 20 years of dedicated, innovative, and transformative service to the City of Philadelphia and City Council, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Two resolutions from the Northwest today. Council President, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution and well wishes to Janey.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution may be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council Committee of the Whole to hold hearings to discuss the current state of Philadelphia school facilities, how the school district evaluates those facilities, and what educational facility needs are for the school district today and in the future, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of Education, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I will discuss this a little bit more on the floor today because it's that important, but for now, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. And thank you for following protocol and doing your comments during speeches. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings to investigate the rising cost of energy bills, what is driving those increases, and what the city can and can't do to address why our energy bills are so high, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
Now I'm gonna do some commentary. If you grew up in a black family, you already know, turn the lights off in the house when you leave your house. That's what my momma used to say. Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I'm gonna definitely provide more remarks about that on the floor, but for now, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Matchroom Boxing and Empire Fighting Chance Boxing for their impactful partnership that expands boxing opportunities in Philadelphia and worldwide, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, Councilwoman Bass recognized the champ in that resolution part, but this is the organization he has joined, so I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the 25th anniversary of La Liga de Barrio and recognizing its ongoing commitment to provide opportunities for Latino youth in Philadelphia by providing a positive outlet for educational, athletic, and personal development, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on the resolution. And who's also the co-sponsor?
Co-sponsor is Councilmember Kessie Lozada and Councilmembers Isaiah Thomas. Co-intros. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating youth-involved Philadelphia on the occasion of its 25th anniversary for their commitment to increasing civic engagement, empowering young adults, fostering leadership development, and connecting young professionals with leadership and volunteer opportunities, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Ballet X on the occasion of its 20th anniversary for its outstanding contributions to contemporary ballet in the cultural life of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Technology and Information Services to hold hearings exploring the context of data center development and operations in the Philadelphia region, the demand for technology infrastructure to support increased use of digital services, and the impacts of its development on Philadelphia's communities, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
Councilmember Lozada, make a motion on the resolution. And who's the co-sponsor?
My co-sponsor is Majority Leader Kendra Brooks, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Bipartisanship going on. It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Great job. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating the 60th anniversary of Community College of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for your adoption.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Community College of Philadelphia and its legislators for a day, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Can we give our young people a round of applause, though, for staying all day? That's the future generation of our city. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the month of October 2025 as Manufacturing Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and remembering the life and legacy of Vincent "Mr. Vince" Termini Sr., the beloved owner of Termini Brothers Bakery, introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Great job. He was a giant of a man. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of the acclaimed musician D'Angelo, who chose his truth over any accolades or accomplishments, therefore achieving a success that leaves him with few peers, introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October as Children's Health Month in the City of Philadelphia and affirming the city's commitment to children's overall well-being, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
There are no further resolutions in my possession, Council President.
Are there any speeches on the part of the minority?
The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I join Councilmember Lozada in co-introducing a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. One of the first pieces of legislation I introduce in City Council was a bill in honor of my cousin Tiana, who lost her life to domestic violence. Domestic violence often happens behind closed doors, and survivors often face intimidation, threats, and shame that prevent them from speaking out. It can be hard to recognize and even harder to talk about. By declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we commit to ending the silence surrounding domestic violence, and we send a clear message to survivors. We see you, we value you, you're not alone, and we are here to help. I'll continue honoring Tiana's memory by fighting for survivors of domestic violence, making resources more visible and accessible, and ensuring survivors know that they are not alone. And I want to thank all my council colleagues and staff members who are wearing purple today to demonstrate their support for this collective effort. Second, I'm so proud to be recognizing Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters Today in Philadelphia City Council. I've been fortunate to partner with both organizations over the last couple of years, and I've seen firsthand how important it is for women to enjoy their fandom in inclusive spaces, many of which who are Black and queer-led. Last year, the Arts and Culture Team at Working Families Organization was able to partner with Watch Party PHL because we understand that women in sports is a culture driver. Both these organizations have played an important role in making Philadelphia a global sports destination in 2026, and I cannot wait to celebrate with all of their incredible community members during the next year's events. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a word today, and today that word is root. That's the theme I'm going with. First, I want to start by appreciating the presence and attention of Kakadar Lim, a student at CCP studying business. He's here as a part of the He's here as a part of the contingent of students that have been learning what it's like to be a legislator for the day, and it's been quite a day. And I hope that he and his classmates are enjoying their trip to City Hall. I'm always going to ride for the city's university. I know Dr. Marshall was left, but it is one of those institutions that can transform the face of our city, and I'm grateful for the roots that it lays here in the city of Philadelphia. Further, I also want to acknowledge the Watch Party that my leader has did a presentation on honoring today Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters. I know that the roots for their effort and for this effort are connected to the massive tree that is Philly basketball, for the passion that exists on our playgrounds, in our high school gyms, and world-class arenas, at our rec centers, and on our blocks. I definitely join this council and this city in cherishing that the girls and women of Philadelphia are entering an era where women's ball will not just exist, but it will flourish. And that is very encouraging, as we have heard today during the presentation. I also want to acknowledge that on Tuesday, D'Angelo, legendary musician, made his transition Tuesday morning while I was making phone calls after a battle with pancreatic cancer. He was 51 years old. Already, in the pantheon of Black performers, he was one of the few folks who really, truly chose his musicianship and his artistry over the many commercial avenues that were available to him as a leading light in the industry. Personal trauma played a significant part, but he was deeply deliberate about when and how his music actually came out, and he clearly denied any and all pressures to rush his process. He chose songwriting over hit-making, and ironically, that made his work timeless for many of us. He was a preacher's kid, definitely grappled with the choice to make music for popular audiences. His parents were clear about wanting him to use his gifts for ministry, but he continually pointed to the influence of his grandmother, Alberta Cox. And though one of those church elders, who was a community cornerstone, she was clear with him that he needed to follow his creative vision, a critical sanction at that point in his life. As I said, he's already in the pantheon of Black performers. We can celebrate that nothing about the man was a performance or a put-on, as they would say in any way. If you wanted something raw, sonically, lyrically, or personally, D'Angelo was your man. This loss actually hit me a bit harder than I expected, maybe because it was sudden and unexpected, maybe because the man felt a bit like his music, enigmatic, existential, and immortal. I'm still reeling a bit. I'll be playing only him and Prince until I'm not playing it. But I'm also deeply grateful for how he created another immortal moment in Song for Our City. Song said, "Let me tell you about this girl. Maybe I shouldn't. Met her in Philly. Her name was Brown Sugar." Those that know, know. Legalize it. But in all seriousness, not being from here, he left an indelible mark here and became a pioneer of a genre here that he never actually claimed. That's a statement to his artistry. What a life. Rest in power and sonic bliss, Michael Archer. On the Cost of Living Task Force and the Affordable Philly Now Initiative, I want to shout out Members Thomas and Driscoll for authorizing a hearing on what the city can and can't do about the rising costs of energy bills. It's so on point, it's so timely, since energy is just one of the ways that working families are actually feeling some economic pressure in this moment. I'm excited to see what we learn and ultimately to incorporate it in the work of our Cost of Living Task Force that we just voted for. We need an affordable Philly. We need it now, and efforts like this are a critical step on the path to get us to be a city where all of us can afford to actually live here. Further, there was an article that dropped in the Inky this past week that a colleague shared with me about cost-burden renters. Some of the notes that were in that was that almost half renters, half the city rents, by the way, half of those renters, which is about 149,000 households, spent 35% or more of their income on housing costs in 2024, a four percentage point increase over the previous year, according to the Census Bureau data. Also, that HUD calls any renter who spends more than 30% of their income "cost-burdened." I'll say that again. HUD calls any renter who spends more than 30% of their income "cost-burdened." They also noted that seniors, fixed incomes, are just not, quote, "just not keeping up with the rental market." This is something that we ought to note. So this is one of the many reasons why I was glad to introduce the Philly Rent Refund last week as a part of the Affordable Philly Now Initiative. That bill, unlike the homestead exemption that Council President and others have championed, doesn't actually cover all tenants, right? It doesn't even cover all cost-burden tenants, though that's something to think about. It does focus on the seniors, the widows, and the differently-able persons on fixed income who too often find themselves in the scenarios that the Inquirer's article actually described. So we've seen the signs. We've heard the chants about funding levels for lower-income tenants in the home initiative, especially with articles like this dropping that make the immediacy of the crisis so clear. I do hope, and I do believe, and I feel like I'm finding it already, that this body is ready to truly materially answer the call coming from our constituents who rent, organized and unorganized. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much.
Are there any speeches on the part of the majority?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a mention of the bill that we introduced today around catalytic converter theft. I first introduced a bill in 2022 addressing a critical issue that has deeply impacted our community, catalytic converter theft. I'm here to touch up on that ordinance that'll cover a loophole and increase penalties to deter this destructive and costly crime. For those that don't know, catalytic converters are essential components of our vehicles designed to reduce harmful emissions. They are also a prime target for thieves because of the valuable metals inside. What is particularly alarming is the methods some criminals use. They steal these converters, dismantle them, and sell the parts separately, often reassembling them for resale. This practice not only fuels an underground market, but also undermines our effort to keep our streets and neighborhoods safe. The core of our new ordinance is simple but powerful. We are increasing the penalties for catalytic converter theft. This increase is designed so that the cost to sell a stolen catalytic converter will now be higher than the cost to repair the damaged cause. Our goal remains clear, to remove any financial incentive for stealing these vital parts. Why do we believe this will work? Well, the evidence is clear. According to the PPD, findings reveal a striking reduction in these crimes following our previous legislative efforts. And between January 16, 2022, and January 15, 2023, one year, the year before the enactment of Bill Number 220923A, there were 5,919 reported incidents of catalytic converter thefts or attempted thefts. But in the year that followed the bill's enactment, from January 16, 2023 to January 15, 2024, that number dropped dramatically to 1,452. This 75% reduction proves that targeted legislation and increased penalties work. But the fight is not over. Criminals are adaptive, and we must be one step ahead. So today, with this ordinance, we are doubling down on our commitment to protecting Philadelphia residents and their property. We are sending a strong message that catalytic converter theft will not be tolerated. We will continue to work closely with law enforcement, community organizations, and industry partners to enforce this law and safeguard our city. And one last thing, I do want to give a brief shout-out. Well, first, I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Jamie Gaudier and also Councilmember Curtis Jones for their recognition of the importance of boxing and the boxing industry here in the city of Philadelphia. And I want to give a shout-out to the one and only Boots Ennis from Brickyard in Germantown, for those who don't know. But Boots Ennis won his fight last Saturday night in 1 minute and 58 seconds. First-round knockout and doing what he does. He's, you know, just an amazing young man, representing our communities well. And so shout-out to Boots. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Congratulations, Boots Ennis. Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you to my colleagues for passing my legislation to make voter registration easier for Philadelphians. I'll save the details for the press conference immediately following this council session in the hallway in front of Room 405. In short, the bill meets people where they are and makes updating registration easy when people move in the city. I'm also pleased that the Economic Opportunity Review Committee, EORC, bill was reported out of committee to the full council with a favorable recommendation. This bill strengthens the EORC's ability to do its job by bringing in more perspectives, including the Asian-American and the LGBTQ+ chambers, without weakening standards or transparency. As you know, over the past few months, I have held two hearings on DHS practices and hosted a town hall. I learned a lot from those sessions. As I prepare legislation to further protect child welfare, it's important we center children's well-being. That's why I am proud that council adopted my resolution recognizing October as Children's Health Month. Kids are growing, so what they breathe and drink shows up in how they sleep, learn, and feel. Our commitment is practical: fresh air in classrooms, clean drinking water, safe homes, free of peeling paint and damp corners, checkups kept, vaccines on schedule, hot lunches that carry students to the day, and help that's easy to reach when a child needs to talk to someone. Finally, I want to thank my legislator for the day for joining me, Naveya Mitchell, a Behavioral Health and Human Services major at Community College of Philadelphia, who loves writing, photography, nature walks, and community engagement. Thank you, Naveya, and thank you, Council President. I will back.
You're welcome. Good job. Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Mark Squilla, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, Councilmember Jamie Gaudier, Councilmember Mike Driscoll, as well as Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, and of course, your support, Council President. I know yesterday was a very eventful hearing as it relates to our security guard legislation. I appreciate your support and your vote of confidence in making sure that we handle that legislation in the right way. So first and foremost, thank you, colleagues. That bill is actually a series of bills and resolutions that I've introduced in the last couple of weeks to really make sure that we are focused on 2026 and to make sure that we are taking the necessary steps as a legislative body during our due diligence to put us in a position to have the best possible year we can. Outside of just the security guard bill legislation, looking at safety, today I introduced a bill around third-party reservations. If you are a food person like me that recognized the great restaurants in the city of Philadelphia, you understand there's a unique trend happening where people are making reservations at restaurants and not necessarily fulfilling them. In the midst of dialogue with the restaurant and hospitality industry in preparation for next year, this is one of the things that they actually asked us to do and asked us to look at in order to assure that they're able to maximize their ability to service all of the people who are coming to the city of Philadelphia next year. So I look forward to working with my colleagues, as well as the hospitality industry, to address this issue around third-party reservations. I'm glad that other cities have already done it. It puts us in a position to be able to show that there's precedent. We also introduced resolutions around traffic. I think that pretty much speaks for itself, especially anybody who doesn't live in the area of Center City and has to come to City Hall on a consistent basis. Thinking about my councilperson in the 9th District, we have a pretty long commute on a consistent basis, and we understand that traffic issues are already significant right now. So imagine what they're going to be next year. So I'm looking forward to working with the admin on that particular initiative. And of course, there's a concern and a conversation needed around short-term rentals. Now, Council President, when it comes to short-term rentals, I want to be honest. I don't have the solution. I'm not sure what we should do. But I do think it's worth a conversation. I was at an event with Councilmember Gaudier, and I listened to residents in her district talk about the fact that they want to spend June traveling across the world. But they also have benefited from the leadership that this legislative body have showed when it comes to homeowner protection programs, like the senior tax freeze, loop, and homestead, things that you've championed yourself, Council President. And we don't want the same people who we're trying to protect to be put in a position to be ineligible for those programs because they decided to travel for a month or a couple of weeks while all these people are visiting Philadelphia, and they rented their house. And there's unintended consequences when we don't do our due diligence and get out in front of these issues. So those four different bills specifically relate to 2026 and getting us ready for 2026. And I appreciate all of my colleagues who co-sponsored those specific resolutions. As our resolutions and bills. As I close out, I also want to again take a moment to thank Councilmember Driscoll and his leadership, partnering with him to assess the cost, the rising cost of energy in the city of Philadelphia. I know Councilmember O'Rourke is looking at affordability in general. But, you know, I'm gonna be honest. You know, I think people need to understand that our energy bills are going up, too. It's not just them. This is not a decision that Philadelphia government is making. We do not have a direct impact on some of the issues that we're seeing around energy bills. And I'm pretty sure if you poll 17 out of 17 members of City Council, we're paying more in energy as it relates to our utility bills, just like the rest of the citizens of Philadelphia. And we need to figure out what can we do to curve the spike that's happening right now, because I would hate to look up in a year or two and be paying $1,000 a month in utility bills. I can't afford it, and I'm sure most Philadelphians can't afford it. I want to close out, Council President, actually by thanking you for your leadership. Today, I introduced a resolution to examine the school closure process. We understand that that decision is going to be made very soon. We understand that that decision is going to be made very soon, and I think it's important that members who are especially not on the Education Committee and our district council members get an opportunity to not just weigh in as it relates to the direction we're going with school facilities, but also we need to give the public an opportunity to communicate to this legislative body what their opinion is. And so I look forward to that resolution turning into a hearing based on your leadership, Council President. I'm looking forward to that being a committee of the whole hearing so it can give everybody an opportunity to get a bite at the apple, to be able to communicate our opinion, not just as residents, not just as parents, not just as stakeholders, but as the people who devote on what amount of money should actually go to the school district of Philadelphia. So thank you for your leadership, Council President, and thank you to all the members of City Council who co-sponsored that resolution, as well as all of the members who are on the Education Committee that's been working on this issue for some time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Member Thomas. Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Couple of quick shout-outs because I didn't get to do it last week. First goes to Jamie Gaudier, who quite frankly surprised me. I turned on the TV and she's taking over a drug corner, cat in another block. I mean, like out there and chasing away negative elements that border my district, but she represents. And I was never so proud of my little sisters when they get tough, and I've seen them on occasion do that. So shout out to you. And I want to welcome back Nicholas O'Rourke. We did miss you. I was listening to your speech in the majority, I said, that's what I've been missing in here. So welcome back, but also thank you for coming out to the 1,300 block of Frazier last week where we dedicated 10 new houses that were totally repaired. And it ranged from people who were low-income to workforce development, folk who had civil service jobs that just couldn't get ahead of their bills to be able to fix that furnace, to be able to fix that roof. And this program, along with the cooperation of Wells Fargo, is maintaining the glue of a neighborhood so that it doesn't convert strictly to rental, that homeownership can be preserved. And thank you for being on the block with me, Member O'Rourke. But I want to also shout out, and this will lead into my true comments, Isaiah Thomas Ford, his focus on 2026 and all of the things that can potentially go right for our city. Like I've got people from around the globe contacting me and saying, you know, I need to come and be a part of the hundreds of events, local, national, and district events that are going to happen next year. And I'm excited about, and I'm feeling kind of patriotic about next year. However, and nevertheless, we always got to be prepared in this town for Plan B. And I beseech you, President Johnson, I didn't introduce a resolution on it because I'd rather you take the lead on a, not a special committee, but at least a work group to work with the administration because I sense with the little hairs on the back of my neck that when you have somebody in the White House that reminds me a little bit of Dennis the Menace, like they could go this way, they could go that way. I mean, you don't know what this person will do. One day, they wake up at 3:00 in the morning and you are right. Next day, they wake up at 3:00 in the morning, they sending angry tweets and troops, the military, to a town near you. And a lot of people will say, well, you know, and thank God for my mayor who knows how to keep that at bay, say the right things and do the right things so that we don't get a $2 billion hit over the head. I get it. What happens if he wakes up and says, bad things happen in Philadelphia? And without any quantitative analysis, without any true justification, decide, I'm sending people to Kensington? We need to know how we, as a government, are going to react to that, how we can preserve peace in our streets and have a Plan B, if you would, if he wakes up and starts sending angry tweets and troops. So I'd like you, if you would, take the lead, Mr. President, to work with our mayor. I don't want it all public because everybody don't need to know everything, the plan per se. And I trust the leadership of this city to put together a plan that says, in case of Trump, break glass, this is what we gonna do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Break glass. Thank you, Member Jones. Appreciate you on this very serious matter. The chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Thank you, Council President. I think the glass is broken, so let's start moving, okay? Thank you, colleague. I think it's, you're right on point here. First, I want to thank everybody who was able to make it to my tech committee, to our tech committee hearing yesterday on AI and government. It was an eye-opening discussion, left us with a lot more areas to explore and discussions to be had, but I think we all left there knowing how important that conversation was and knowing where we need to go going forward. I also introduced three resolutions today celebrating the anniversaries of three awesome organizations in Philly doing incredible work. First, I was so happy to honor 25 years of young and vile Philadelphia. Yip's commitment to increasing civic engagement and fostering leadership development empowers the next generation of professionals. As longtime advocates and elected officials, we might forget what it's like to be one of those young, eager people trying to get involved and uplift their community, but these young Philadelphians are a reminder that we need to keep pushing to create a better, brighter future. Thank you for 25 years of amazing service. I also, along with councilmembers Ketsi Lizada and Isaiah Thomas, recognize the 25th anniversary of La Liga del Barrio, the city's first Latino youth organization, youth basketball league. By providing opportunities for Latino youth in Philadelphia with outlets for educational, athletic, and personal development, the team provides a supportive environment for young adults and kids to thrive. I want to give a shout-out to Ray and Esther Alvarez, who had to leave before public comment. They are the founders of La Liga. I have known them my entire professional life. They are like family to me. I am so amazingly proud of them and for the 25 years that they have put into La Liga. I also introduced a resolution celebrating 20 years of Ballet X, right in Council President's district, which has greatly enriched the cultural life of Philadelphia by virtue of its inventive, expressive, and contemporary performances. In 2005, its founders created something more creative and expansive than traditional ballet. Today, it serves as a leader nationally and internationally for its innovative programming and artistic excellence. Thank you for making Philadelphia more beautiful for the last 20 years. Super proud of all of them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to take an opportunity to acknowledge my legislator for a day student, CCP student, Olivia. It's been great to have her here, even for a short time. Her energy and her poise just shines through, and I am glad to hear that she's considering going into Urban Studies. And next, I just wanted to invite everyone to a briefing right after council by the Office of the Youth Ombuds Person that will be held in the caucus room. For those that don't know, the office provides oversight for youth residential placement facilities, including juvenile detention, foster group homes, and inpatient psychiatric facilities. And so this is a great chance to learn about one of the tools our city has to provide oversight over these facilities and to support our young people and ensure that they're being cared for well. And there will be tasty lunch, so I hope that's an extra incentive. Thank you so much.
They got vegan? Chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also recognize my legislator for the day, CCP student, Selena Ryland. You know, it was a pleasure getting to know her today, just walking in the hallways with her, her energy. We was already vibing, and she understands the things that we go through sitting in this chamber when we had the public comment. So, you know, I want to thank you again, Selena, for being here today. I want to also, when I say no, thank CCP for being here, for always being here, for me personally, whenever we need an event, SECP, they always come through. So of course, I wanted to honor them on their 60th anniversary. We've had Community College in this city for 60 years, and I know myself and other colleagues are wishing and hoping that we can make Community College free for every single individual in the city of Philadelphia. And so we're going to continue to be working on that issue. Also want to, also introduce a resolution today honoring manufacturing month. I know folks like to think manufacturing is a lost industry, but here in the city of Philadelphia, we have to think about our diversity when it comes to manufacturing. We got to think about the pharmaceutical industries and how much they're producing in this city, the biotech industry, how much they're producing in this city. FMCs here in the city with the chemical manufacturing. So there are a lot of opportunities in manufacturing in this city that we, that provide livable jobs, you know, family sustaining jobs. We have to keep promoting that to our constituents to ensure that, you know, they can continue to afford to live in the city of Philadelphia. But on that same note with affordability, today, we introduced a bill that would essentially eliminate late fees for residential customers on your water bills, right? Because we understand, as other members today have been talking about how energy and utility costs have been rising across the country and in the city specifically, we can do something about that because we own our water system here. So in order to allow our residents to just be able to live a little bit more free in this city, this bill will enable residential customers, right, to avoid paying late fees and penalties on your water bill because we have to make sure that this city is affordable for the people who can, who live in this city. Doesn't mean you don't have to pay your water bill, all right, but we want to make sure that we are providing a level of service that the city residents can really appreciate, and we want to, you know, again, keep their costs down as much as possible as other costs are continuing to rise in the city. And lastly, Mr. President, I'd be remiss if I do not honor and thank my friend, Janay Mumford. I've known Janay since I was an intern in the John Street administration. My son calls her daughter his big cousin, and you know, it's going to, I'm going to miss her in these halls, but I'm going to be able to continue to work with her as she go works at my alma mater. So Janay, I look forward to working for you in your next capacity. Thank you, Mr. President.
And you actually are also one of trustees on the board, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. President.
You'll be overseeing on the whole operation.
Yes, sir.
Good job. Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. It's been a long day, so I'm going to try to keep it short, but several things. I also want to recognize my legislator for the day, Jules. Thank you for being with us today. I hope that you have watched your government at work and that you take an additional interest in continuing to work and ensure that young people like you get civically engaged and stay engaged in what is happening in their communities. But thank you for being with us. As we continue to enthusiastically have conversation about 2026, I want to make sure that I continue to speak about the importance of public safety in neighborhoods like mine that have been under the international spotlight as it relates to the opioid crisis. And so I'm asking all of my colleagues that when you are in rooms and conversations are happening about 2026, that you elevate the importance of public safety in neighborhoods like Kensington so that we don't create situations where people are curious and they come into the community because they want to see and experience what they're seeing online and either caught up in the spiral of addiction because they've tried something and didn't understand how powerful and potent it was and end up being stuck here in our city, or because they put themselves in a situation where they put their cell phones up because they wanted to be a part of that video sharing world and find themselves in a, in a safety situation because someone was upset about them recording. And so please, as you continue to have conversations about 2026, public safety in the Kensington community is extremely important, and so I ask you to support me and my constituency in ensuring that we pay special attention to that neighborhood. In addition to that, I'd like to thank Minority Leader Brooks for co-sponsoring the resolution honoring, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia. Domestic violence is not a distant issue. It is a pervasive reality that affects individuals across all walks of life. It transcends race, gender, age, and social economic status, yet certain communities bear a disproportionate burden. Women, particularly women of color, are more likely to experience intimate partner violence. In Philadelphia, where diversity is our strength, we must acknowledge that silence is not an option. This resolution reflects a spirit that refuses to accept violence as a norm and instead chooses compassion, support, and justice. Today, we also acknowledge Paint Philly Purple Day, driven by our incredible dedicated partners who were with us today and who are on the front lines of advocacy for survivors every day. Thank you to my colleagues for acknowledging them in our chambers. To my colleagues, thank you for wearing purple today. You all look amazing, and as part of this initiative, we're asking you to do more. And so the call to action is to take a selfie, post it, and share domestic violence resources or a supportive message with the hashtag #PaintPhillyPurple, tag @PhillyODVS. I'd also like us not to wait for another tragedy to remind us of the urgency of this issue. We can start conversations now and reaffirm our commitment to creating Philadelphia, to creating a Philadelphia that is free from the shadows of domestic violence, a Philadelphia where love, respect, and dignity are the foundations upon which we build our future. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you very much, Member Lizada. And last but not least, Councilman Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind the residents of the Ninth District that we are having a senior breakfast and bingo this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. at the Finley Recreation Center located at 7701 Mansfield Avenue. That is for all of our adult citizens. There will be line dancing, bingo, and a great breakfast, and 30-plus resources for them to explore this Saturday, October 18, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. I'm also just want to thank all of our colleagues who supported Ms. Mumford and the work that she's been doing in the city of Philadelphia. We don't often have colleagues that often, like Ms. Mumford, who are always trying their best to solve issues. I just want to briefly say something of why we wanted to honor Ms. Mumford. Janay Mumford represents somebody that finds, is smart, but she's always thinking outside of the box of how to get things done. One of the reasons why, and the main reason, the main reason why I really wanted to, I was thankful to take on this role on City Council is because I do not like bureaucracy. And just so everyone understands what bureaucracy is, it is hierarchy. There are strict rules that are often impersonal and overly rigid. Janay Mumford did not, does not represent that, and that's why I champion her today. But there is a department, and there are several departments in the city of Philadelphia that have leadership that represents bureaucracy, and the Philadelphia Water Department is one of them. I've had the worst experience with bureaucracy with the leadership of the Philadelphia Water Department, and it takes a lot for me to get this way. I don't get frustrated very easily. I'm normally cool, calm, but something about bureaucracy riles me up. A few weeks, a couple weeks, a few weeks ago, back on September 24th, I got notice from neighbors in Philadelphia, probably around August, that the reservoir in East Oak Lane had rubbish, trash, landscaping issues, weeds all around this fence. And so the neighbor said, why don't we just find a way to get the water department that they're responsible for that reservoir to clean it up? Something like, it's a simple landscaping issue. Go out and fix it. So I make a call. I think it's going to be done within a few weeks, few days or so. It is now October the 16th, and we still have no resolution to a simple landscaping issue. The mayor of the city of Philadelphia has been pressing the importance of being clean and green. Meanwhile, one of the largest revenue agencies in the city of Philadelphia, in his leadership, having talked, spoken to the commissioner on several times, has found a way to make a landscaping issue complicated. Their response, well, we have to go through procurement, there's a financial person that we need to talk to, we got to find the right person to manage it. There are thousands of landscapers in the city of Philadelphia that can go out and clean rubbish, weeds off of a fence. And that leads me to think about all of the other issues that I've kindly been, you know, talking to them about. We had to have a whole community meeting about the lack of response from the Water Department in West Oak Lane for something, and their confusion about a year ago. At first, I was like, maybe that was something, you know, that was normal, we just needed to do it. But now I'm starting to realize that if you can't solve a landscaping issue with all the type of leadership that you have and the type of people that you have in that department, all the other issues that you make complicated aren't really that complicated. And then in addition to that, we have, every time I go to community meetings, I hear about the Water Department's lack of care for our community. They're leaving debris, trash around all, and they're not getting their projects done in a timely fashion. Things that would not be acceptable in Bucks County or even Montgomery County, we are allowing to happen here in the city of Philadelphia. I gave the commissioner, from September 24th, now it's October 16th, and he has still not addressed this issue in the East Oak Lane and Aloney area of Philadelphia. That is not clean or green, and it tells me everything that I need to know about the lack of efficiency of the Philadelphia Water Department. I want you all to know that there's something about bureaucracy that just gets me riled up, and the Philadelphia Water Department is a poor example of leadership, and it needs to be addressed. I'm not going to let this one go, and it's not going to be okay. They have to fix this issue because our neighbors in East Oak Lane and Aloney should not be crying and yelling about an issue that they have to deal with since July, since July. It's unacceptable, and when I called him the other day, he said, oh, I'm going to go check it out. What do you mean you checking it out just now? Get to it! It's unacceptable. I do not like people who do not think outside of the box and to get things done. Thank you, Council President.
Man, y'all in here making all that noise? Good job, Member Dr. Phillips. But could the press, could y'all like respect the body and keep it down a little bit? We know y'all control the narrative, but we still got business to do. Very well said, sir. Hopefully, they'll cover it for you. The Water Department Commissioner, he's not doing his job in East Oak Lane and Aloney, and maybe it's like 10 of y'all over there can cover it and give Member Dr. Phillips some support. I want to take a moment to acknowledge young man shadowing today from Community College, Dewan Worthen. Can we give him a round of applause? I think he did a good job. And to all the students from Community College taking time off of their schedule today to see democracy in action. taking time off of their schedule today to see democracy in action, and I applaud them for making the choice to be at the right place at the right time, because you don't have to be here. They could be somewhere else doing something else. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the guest commentator for WRD today, Miss Thera Martin. We thank you for covering City Council today. We know all your hard work that you're doing in the area of journalism and in radio. So thank you for being a best guest commentator on with WRD covering us today. At this moment, I want to call on my majority whip, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, for a motion to adjourn.
This is a special motion to adjourn because next week is my father's 74th birthday. So thank you, Mr. President. I move that City Council stands adjourned until Thursday, October 23, 2025, at 10 a.m.